Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 12th, 2011. If you'd all please join me in standing, and we're welcoming Brownie Troop 60593 to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies?
Girl Scouts attention. Color Guard advance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard, honor your flag. Color Guard dismissed.
Thank you, ladies. Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Gillette?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Erwin?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here. Item four is request for any continuance or public hearing items on the agenda. I have none listed. Does council have any requests? Ms. Bill De La Peña?
After the study session, if we could perhaps move up item 10B before item 9B, which is capital improvement budget. And I was going to ask to move up the health insurance benefits for council members, but I think we are okay.
Is there any objection on the council of that request? Those may be lengthy items, I'm just putting that out there. We have a capital improvement budget that we need to get to, and we're going to have to get through the entire agenda.
And the reason for changing?
I don't know. Ms. De La Peña, why would you like to move those items up?
I'm sure it will be a quick item. We have several representatives in the audience who would like to speak about the item, and I'm not sure whether it's fair to keep them all the way until the very late hour for an item that may not take a long time.
So, we have two items, 10A and 10B. Is it 10A, or just 10B?
Let me just double check. It was only 10B.
Oh, okay, very good. All right. Is there any objection? All right, that'll be the order. All right, that brings me to item five, that's special presentations. Just give me a moment while I go down to the podium. We begin our special presentations this evening with a moment to move in a direction where we can honor actually some of our city staff. Each year in April, we take a few moments to recognize a group of individuals who do an outstanding job here at the city, supporting our residents, the city staff throughout the year. I'd like to invite Human Resources Associate Analyst and Volunteer Coordinator Elena Keenan to join me here at the podium. As pretty much everybody knows here in the city of Thousand Oaks and in the state, fiscal challenges due to budget cuts have affected public agencies for several years now, and have caused city departments to continually evaluate and implement strategies that allow us to maintain first-rate services, as well as provide personal attention to our customers, and those folks are you, ladies and gentlemen. These reductions have emphasized the critical role that our volunteers play in our city organization. It's been said many times that in many respects, we would simply not be able to run Thousand Oaks as we know it without the volunteers. Stop and think a little bit about the volunteers we have in the community. Whether you're there as a visitor or as a patient, you can't miss the volunteers at Los Robles Hospital that are working throughout the hospital. If you happen to come to the Civic Arts Plaza for a performance, volunteers will meet you there. If you come to the city library, volunteers will meet you there. And the list goes on and on and on. Volunteers in policing. We just have a tremendous amount of volunteerism here in our community, and I think it reflects the pride that the residents of Thousand Oaks have in their community. So they speak more on the volunteers and what they do for us. Let me invite Elena to come up and share some thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Good evening, council members, city managers, city attorney and staff. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite the city's various volunteer coordinators who are here this evening to join me down at the podium. As Mayor Fox mentioned, I am privileged to be the volunteer coordinator here at City Hall. I work in the Human Resources Department, but there are many volunteer coordinators here at the city, representing the over 1,000 volunteers that we have. And as Mayor Fox mentioned, certainly during this time of economic uncertainty and financial challenges, this wonderful wealth of volunteers that we have serving our citizens and residents of Thousand Oaks really assist us as staff in maximizing our resources. So as volunteer coordinators, we wanted to just take a brief moment each to highlight the role and the contribution of each of our respective volunteer groups. And I wanted to begin by introducing Judy Baumstedt, who is the volunteer coordinator at the Thousand Oaks Library.
I've had the privilege of overseeing the volunteers at the library for three years now, and it really is a privilege. It's a wonderful place to work. We currently have about 170 adult volunteers and 100 teen volunteers, and the teens are mostly in the summertime. Our volunteers do a variety of tasks such as working in the genealogy section, staffing the gift store, preparing for events, preparing for other things, staffing programs, sorting book donations. That's a big part of the volunteer duties. But even more important than the large quantity of volunteers that we have is the quality of volunteers that we have. I'm convinced that the library attracts bright, dedicated, and professional people. This description applies to the teens we have also. If anyone thinks that the teens today are deficient, they need to come to our summer reading program and see our teens in action. They are respectful, smart, hardworking, and responsible. I am proud to say that they are our future. Today, I received an application from a 14-year-old. On the application, it asks why belong to the teen volunteer program. She wrote, "The Thousand Oaks Library has always been so resourceful and helpful to me, so I would be obliged to help keep it running." This is a quote from an email I received in January from a 17-year-old. "I have spent some time volunteering at a few other places, but to tell you the truth, I enjoy spending my time here at the library the most. The warm and friendly atmosphere, the fun yet rewarding events, the generous and dedicated supervisors, who could resist working here?" That's someone 17, that's amazing. "We could not function without our volunteers. They contribute approximately 21,000 hours a year, and they also add a positive addition to our work environment." Robert South said, "If there be any truer measure of a man than by what he does, it must be by what he gives. We are thankful for our volunteers, what they give, and who they are." And now I'd like to introduce Antoinette Mann from the city clerk's office.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, council members and staff. One of the city clerk's department's responsibilities is to oversee all the city boards, commissions, and committees. It's my pleasure to speak to you briefly regarding the volunteers that serve on these committees for the city of Thousand Oaks. These volunteers give their time, energy, and talents by participating in numerous public meetings and study a variety of topics. We have approximately 120 residents who serve on 18 boards, commissions, or committees to represent the city in a variety of issues. Those could be senior, youth, traffic, arts, and planning, just to name a few. For those of the viewing public, if you're interested in serving on one of these committees, you may contact the city clerk's office or visit our city's website at www.thousandoaks.org for more information. We also have an option under the Committee Commission and Board's vacancy list tab to sign up for email alerts, so you can automatically be notified whenever there's a vacancy on any of these commissions. And right now, we are currently recruiting for four committees, looking for 22 new volunteers. On behalf of the city, I would like to thank each of our members of these committees for their time, commitment, and service to the city of Thousand Oaks. We could not do it without you. I would like to introduce Nancy Longto from the Cultural Affairs Theaters Department.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Longto, and I'm the theater house supervisor and liaison to the Friends of the Civic Arts Plaza of our volunteer organization. The Friends Volunteers Program is designed to encourage individuals to utilize their skills in support of the Civic Arts Plaza. Volunteers are welcome to participate in one or more of the different committees: office angels, membership, tours, multimedia, newsletter, special events, gift shop, and volunteer ushering. The Friends organization currently has 443 volunteers and annually saves the city over 250,000 a year in volunteer hours. Our volunteers serve as ambassadors of goodwill to the Civic Arts Plaza patrons and the community of Thousand Oaks. A special thank you to Ruth Pollak, President of the Friends, Marlene Schropshire, Committee Chair of the Volunteer Ushers, the Usher coordinators, and to all of the Friends volunteers for your support of the performing arts. And now I'd like to introduce Graham Watts of Public Works. Thank you so much.
Nancy, Mayor Fox, members of city council. As we all know, we live in a very challenging time, whether it's economic, natural, or man-made, nationally, internationally, or locally, so much is going on in so many different ways, and it's important to put perspective on where we are in life. We live in a very beautiful community, and we have great services that provide protection and preservation of so many things we cherish. But some things can go wrong, and when natural disasters such as an earthquake or a devastating tsunami hit, Thousand Oaks and Ventura County are prepared to respond to that emergency, and they have in several instances done that. But an important part of that is volunteerism, is taking care of yourself and taking care of your neighborhood. The Ventura County Fire Department spearheaded a program called Community Emergency Response Team Training several years ago, and now we're up to almost 5,000 individuals that have been trained through this volunteer-free program. And in Thousand Oaks, over the last five years, we're up to almost 450 individuals that have gone through the CERT program. We just completed our 15th class, and in July, we'll start our 16th class. It's a four-week program, it's each Saturday, and thanks to Fire Captain Brian Dilly, we've had an outstanding response, and we've already got a waiting list for this class. It's pretty much sold out, even though it's free, and we'll get ready for 2012. But it's a wonderful program, and it provides people with emergency preparedness readiness for their neighborhood, for themselves. And an important part of that is it's also a precursor for another program that you're going to hear a little bit more about, and that would be DART. So to be a DART member, you need to go through CERT. And to become a member of a CERT, all you have to do is be 18 years old and live in Ventura County, sign up and show up, and learn all about being prepared, being self-prepared, and not waiting for an agency, or a group, or individual other than yourself to respond to an emergency as you need to, to take care of yourself and your family. With that, I'd like to thank the council and introduce Barbara DiAngelo from the Thousand Oaks Police Department.
Thank you, Graham. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, and of course, our premier city manager. Most of you are very familiar with the VIP program tonight, so I just want to touch on a few highlights for 2010 very briefly. We celebrated our 15th anniversary in 2010. We started with 21 volunteers, and we now have over 100. We're also the first ever volunteer program that anybody knows of to have eight volunteers that have served over 10,000 hours to the same agency, and a few of those I have brought with me tonight. So wave, guys. There's my crew. They're truly amazing. As I said, there's eight of them, and their total combined is probably where we get to the large number at the end, but... Thanks. I had to bribe them with dinner. One of only six volunteer programs in the nation to have received the Model Volunteer Program from the National Volunteer Management Association, which indicates that this program has to have been modeled by at least six other agencies, which it has. To my knowledge, in my 11 years, it's been modeled by 10, including Ventura. So I usually recap with the value of the hours of service from the VIPs, which in 2010 was 38,400 hours, which amounts to over $894,000 using the federal volunteer rate. And I also want to add something that I hadn't thought of until my own volunteer said. Why don't you tell them the money we make for the city in addition to the savings? So, the revenue generated by their parking sites and their fingerprinting services in 2010 was over $237,000. So, if you combine that with the hours they've served, your new number is now 1,131,36. So, thank you. So, instead of the giant check that Mr. Mitnick forbids me to present, we're giving you each $100,000 to equal that $1,100,000 in our thanks to you for supporting the program and to remember the recognition that they so richly deserve. So thank you very much. And now I'm going to introduce the Assistant Chief Police Captain Bill Ayub and the best boss ever.
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening. In addition to our very visible volunteers in policing program, we have a number of other volunteer opportunities at the police department. We currently have 43 Disaster Assistance Response Team members. This group of dedicated volunteers is committed to community service and education by providing first aid, assisting with missing or lost children, and disaster preparedness. Thousand Oaks DART members volunteered more than 9,438 hours last year. We also have eight volunteer reserve deputies at the Thousand Oaks Police Department. In combination, they worked over 1,670 hours over the past year. Now, after completing a six-month academy, which consumes many weekday nights and weekends and incidentally is not included in those volunteer hours, the reserve deputies serve our community by completing patrol shifts with full-time deputies, and they participate in community events as well. Our Explorer program is affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America and is designed to give young men and women aged 14 to 21 years exposure to the field of law enforcement. The Thousand Oaks Explorer Post currently has 25 members who donated more than 1,730 hours of service just this past year, and the explorers assist our department and community at various events throughout the year. Last but certainly not least, our amateur communication service currently has up 105 committed volunteers. In addition to attending weekly readiness exercises throughout the community, ACS volunteers help out with a variety of community events, including Arbor Earth Day, the Amgen Tour of California Bicycle Race, the Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Golf Tournament, the Public Works Days event, Los Robles Medical Center drills, and many other events throughout the year. ACS members volunteered 3,444 hours this past year. We really appreciate all of our volunteers, and I thank you for taking this time to recognize them as well. And next, Elena Keenan has a few more words.
Thank you, Captain Ayub. Yes, I just wanted to briefly highlight the wonderful group of volunteers at City Hall, certainly from what we've heard from all the volunteer coordinators, is the tremendous impact city-wide that all of the volunteers make in our community. But I have a small but mighty group here at City Hall, about 16 volunteers who contributed over 3,000 hours last year, representing and saving the city, about $64,000. Most of these City Hall volunteers work in a variety of office administrative technical capacity, and they are a huge help to city staff, particularly employees in public works, community development, city manager's office, to name a few, in helping them do their job more efficiently. But the core group of volunteers here at City Hall are at the welcome desk. They are situated in the lobby here of City Hall, they meet and greet the visitors and customers who come to City Hall and direct them to the appropriate departments for assistance. And I would invite anyone who's interested in volunteering at City Hall or in taking advantage of any of these volunteer opportunities mentioned this evening, to log on to the city's website at www.t-oaks.org and click on Volunteer Opportunities to then be linked to various sources, whether it be Volunteers in Policing, or the library, or the theaters, and to just get more information about how you can become involved and how to volunteer here at the city. So on behalf of all the city's volunteer coordinators, thank you so much, city council, for your support of our volunteer programs, and most especially during this week of National Volunteer Week. Mayor, we thank you for your recognition of all the city's volunteers' dedicated service. Thanks again.
Let me just take a moment and do a formal presentation of this proclamation, in fact, honoring National Volunteer Week. A lot has been said, but it's really important to note that each and every one of these volunteers and their coordinators do come from a place of service, they come from a place of giving back to their community, and we could not be more proud of you. So on behalf of the city council, let me present to you this proclamation for doing a great job in light of National Volunteer Week. Thanks very much. Our next special presentation celebrates the annual city event, which we refer to as Arbor Day. This event is attended by over 5,000 people each year. This day has been a great success in the past, and a substantial amount of work is required to make it happen. I'd like to introduce Janet Covell, Chair of Arbor Day Committee, to join me here. Janet and her committee members do an excellent job in organizing this extravaganza and this event. I'd also like to introduce founder of Paws for Kids, Sherry Bowers, and Susan Backus to join me also. Carrie, excuse me. Good evening, ladies.
Hi.
It's my pleasure to recognize the 10th anniversary for you for Paws for Kids. Your group has been an integral part of Arbor Day for over 10 years. You do an amazing job of providing support and services to special needs children. The city has a long and committed relationship with supporting environmentally friendly and sustainable projects like Arbor Earth Day, and we'd just like to recognize you for your efforts. Thank you for the great work that you do for our kids, and just recognize your efforts here. So, let me just ask Janet to come up.
Yeah, Arbor Earth Day, this is our 14th year, and it's on Saturday, April 30th, at Caneo Creek Park. And it is a wonderful family event, it's free, and we have over 100 vendors and exhibitors there, including Paws for Kids, who comes every year and does their art-a-thon with recycled materials, with art projects. Kids can actually put together that day and then take home with them. And we are so thrilled that Paws for Kids has been a part of this event for 10 years now. And it was kind of by accident that we teamed up together. And they have just come through every year, they collect all these recycled materials, bring them to the event, bring volunteers, we give them some Girl Scouts or high school volunteers. And last year, I think you said you thought you serviced, or had like 400 kids come through your booth while you were there. So it's a very popular part of Arbor Earth Day, and we just really thank them for what they do to make our event a great success, and we hope everybody comes out to see us this year. New will be Bike Rodeo that we're adding to the event, that's the Glenn Garvin Memorial Bike Rodeo. So families, ride your bikes to Arbor Earth Day on April 30th, go to the Bike Rodeo, learn bike safety, and then you can go to the Art-A-thon book or booth with Paws for Kids and make decorations to decorate your bike with out of recycled materials and ride them home in style. So come out and see us, April 30th, Caneo Creek Park. Here's the poster, and you can get more information at the city's website, t-oaks.org/Arbor. So we'll see y'all there. And commendation.
Ladies, this is a commendation in honor of Paws for Kids, and it indicates the great work that you do. And on behalf of the city council and a very, very grateful community, thanks for all the work you do. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys don't want to say a few words? It's your special time.
It is really, sorry, our honor and privilege to be able to give back to our community in this way. We're a very small nonprofit organization, and we focus on Ventura County, specifically Caneo Valley. And for us to be able to, in one day, be able to give back to our community and to raise awareness about the importance of recycling and reusing, and to highlight our special need, which is kids with special needs, all in one day, we really appreciate the opportunity to do that. So thank you. process, as well as creating several innovations that are unique to Thousand Oaks, including designing and programming the first completely online process in the state. So we're also green, it's paperless. The pilot project was started in January of 2011 and focused initially on the office and retail sector, and this summer we will expand to include the hospitality and restaurant sectors. And we've had an enthusiastic response by the business community, which is in good part based on our partners in the business community. The Thousand Oaks Business Roundtable has provided substantial assistance and direction in designing the green business logo, as well as general marketing assistance, and have a designated green business subcommittee chaired by former Mayor Larry Horner. The Greater Caneo Chamber of Commerce has also embraced the program and are helping us to introduce the program to their membership, including providing our brochures and their new member packets, so we want to acknowledge them. Businesses that have been designated a City of Thousand Oaks Certified Green Business will have a window decal of the green business logo, so you'll be able to recognize them when you're out shopping, and be able to use the logo in their marketing materials to inform the public that they've been certified. In addition, they are honored by the Mayor and City Council for their environmental leadership, and presented with a plaque made of recycled bamboo acknowledging their commitment. And tonight, we have the first four Thousand Oaks businesses to be recognized for their commitment to the environment and officially become City of Thousand Oaks Certified Green Businesses. So we're going to start off with Kimberly Nelson with Solid Waste Solutions, if you could come down. We're going to bring you all down here.[684.00][684.00](applause) We're going to bring all the businesses down here, and they'll stand here. That way, we're going to bring Barbara Murray and Russ Cornwall with Cornwall Security Services, Inc.[700.23][700.23](applause) You're getting the exercise from getting all the way up to the top there, too. Energy Science Solutions, LeLad.[713.12][713.12](applause) And finally, we have Caneo Awards, who's actually our very first business that went through the certification process, and they've also recently learned that they will receive the Cool California Award, which is the highest environmental award given by the state of California. And that's Tammy and Mike Kelmuth.[737.00][737.00](applause) So we'll bring them all over here. Mayor, if you can come in here, we'll...
Can I have one of those awards?
I just asked if Caneo Awards actually made the awards, and they did.[756.56][756.56](laughter) So double duty there, outstanding. Congratulations.
Pleasure to be here.
You bet.
Thanks.[763.66][763.66](applause)
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call Item 6 for a public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments, so Speaker Carter is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Pursuant to Council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Thirteen people have presented cards, and pursuant to Council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Let me begin with Mr. Mitnick, our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Hi, I'm here just to say a few words about Rod Magley, our fire chief, the Thousand Oaks Fire Chief. Rod's been in this role for two years now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And he's had a tremendous career with the fire department. Council may remember that he was recently promoted from, I mean, you're the fire chief of Thousand Oaks, you're in a division chief role with the county fire department, and he was recently promoted to assistant fire chief for the county. I think there's four in that role, correct? So Rod will be leaving us today is his last, or tonight is his last council meeting. I know you'll miss those. And Ted Smith will be coming in, and he'll be introduced by Chief Roper at our next council meeting. I just wanted to turn it over to Rod if he had some final comments for council, but Rod has done an outstanding job. I will miss him personally. He's been an outstanding member of our executive team, a real asset to this community, and I can say that over the last two years, he's made us smarter and more efficient, and the relationship between the city and the fire district couldn't be stronger. So Rod, personally, thank you. We're going to be taking you to lunch very soon, the department heads, so the mic is yours.
Actually, Scott, if you'd just allow me, before Rod gets a chance to make some comments, Rod, I know I speak for the entire council in thanking you for your professionalism, for the type of access you provided both the city management staff and the city council, the skillful way you've managed the incidents here in Thousand Oaks, and both on a personal and professional level, I just want to congratulate you on your promotion. Very, very happy for you. Chief Roper made a great choice. We just wish you all the best as you move forward in your career.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind comments. I know Chief Smith would have liked to have been here tonight, but he's down in LA attending the LA City Fire Department Leadership Academy that I think you might have something to do with, Mr. Mayor. He's in his hotel room down there, struggling mightily to get through his homework for the evening. I hold the distinction of having worked as a designated fire chief for all six of the cities that are served by the Ventura County Fire Department, and I can tell you that each city, their staffs, their elected officials, and their citizens are all passionate about their communities. But when I stepped into the chief's job in Thousand Oaks, I found a greater degree of that passion and a higher level than I had witnessed before. And I have to say that it's been a pleasure to work with your professional staff and with each of you. Your professional staff, city executive staff members that I primarily worked with, carry a great degree of passion for what they do, and they strive in their professionalism to provide the best city services possible. In my role, I had the distinct honor of being able to wake up the city manager in the middle of the night to give him bad news, and yet somehow I still got promoted. But it is with a degree of sadness that I move on, but I also look forward to the future with great interest to see what life brings. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rod. Congratulations.[1034.23][1034.23](applause) Our next speaker is Paul Wagner, followed by Frank Schillo, followed by Barbara Murray. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you very much, and it's an honor to be here. My name is Paul Wagner, and I'm here on behalf of the Elks, elks2477.com. We are a benevolent and protective order, and we have been volunteering in this organization, in this city since 1972, and I never heard so many volunteer groups. It's wonderful to hear. However, I digress. Since Elks Care and Elks Share, one of the things that I was approached with this last few weeks was to help out with Caneo Valley Days, so that's why I'm here. Caneo Valley Days, obviously the Elks are there doing their cooking and barbecuing, but the Caneo has never had a video for Caneo Valley Days. So with much arm twisting, I was put to the task, and I believe we have a presentation for the Caneo Valley Days trailer.[1105.92][1105.92](music)[1106.92][1106.92](applause) And I would seek the council's approval on getting this promoted through the communities and all the way from Huntington Beach to San Luis Obispo. There's no reason we can't get this on every TV on our west coast and bring people down here to Caneo Valley Days. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Frank Schillo, followed by Barbara Murray, followed by Jerry Robings.
Hi. Well, I don't have a video to follow up with that, but I'm here to announce our Chili Cook Off, which will be May 1st, which is the Sunday before the Caneo Valley Days. I want to invite everyone out there in TV land to come to our Chili Cook Off, May 1st. It's at the Caneo Creek South, which is directly across from the library on Jan's and 23. It is hosted by the Rotary Club of Thousand Oaks. It is a, it's the granddaddy of all Chili Cook Offs. We're going to have chili, music, classic cars. All the money goes to nonprofits in the area, goes back into the community, and to the schools in the area. Tickets are only $10. Also, come out and meet Hal, our jalapeno mascot, and the next Miss Chili Caneo Valley pageant, we're going to have that as well. Check our website for more information, www.chili-cook-off.com. Don't miss it, it's going to be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.[1209.24][1209.24](applause) Now we'll have Frank Schillo, followed by Jerry Robings, followed by Gary Hartug. Frank Schillo, all right? Jerry Robings, followed by Gary Hartug, followed by Suzanne Duckett. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Jerry Robings of the City of Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening to make a point that should be obvious to everyone, and that point is that the protests that we hear about the auto mall sign has little to do with the sign or aesthetics, but it has everything to do with politics. This fact became apparent when the Democratic Club of the Caneo Valley sent a message to their members urging them to fight against the sign, going so far as to provide suggested letters and addresses of the council members. That's the flyer that was sent. I can leave that if you'd like to read it, if you haven't seen it. But one must wonder why a group ostensibly organized to support liberal legislation or candidates would get in the middle of an issue over a sign. The likely answer to that question is that they want to embarrass the city council members. Another attempt to embarrass the council happened last week when an ad appeared in the newspaper in which the council members are depicted wearing masks. This was identified by the newspaper as a paid political advertisement. So it's pretty hard to deny that it was political. I would also suggest the ad was rather sleazy. Then, of course, we look at some of the people who are amongst the most vocal protesters of the sign. These same people, these same folks protest against just about everything the council votes for. We've seen these types of protests for years, going all the way back to the days when Linda Parks was on the council. Finally, there are frequent insinuations of wrongdoing by this council. That newspaper ad that I mentioned spelled out "special favors and gifts to the auto mall," that type of thing. I would suggest to you that if there were any wrongdoing by members of the council, one council member would rush to the district attorney and call for an investigation. In the absence of such action to the district attorney, I believe the council is exonerated. Thank you.[1374.88][1374.88](applause)
Gary Hartug, followed by Suzanne Duckett, followed by John Fonti. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Even though I live in the Simi Valley, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone here about a matter that should be of great concern to all Americans. About seven weeks ago, Mike Antonovich, who's been a member of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, had the guts to come out and talk about the cost of illegal aliens to every county here in California. I was on the evening news for millions of people to see here, and he said, "Los Angeles County had to pay $600 million in benefits to the children of illegal aliens." Well, I think, ladies and gentlemen, and my fellow Americans, common sense would lead you to reasonably conclude that Orange County, which is quite likely our second most densely populated county here in California, must have had to pay at least $300 million. And again, I think it's quite reasonable to conclude that here in Ventura County, we quite likely had to pay 60, at least $60 million in benefits to these children and to other illegal adults who manage to manipulate the system. I would like your support, to have you contact your Ventura County Board of Supervisors, state and federal legislators, and please ask them for funding for at least one full-time ICE officer here for Thousand Oaks, and at least eight for Ventura County. We could definitely use their great services. Thank you very much, and I would like to leave you a copy of my letter. Please don't hesitate to contact me, I will be more than happy to explain my plan to you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Duckett, followed by John Fonti, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. A couple of weeks ago, I was shocked and certainly surprised to find out that I do not have to vote for the tax increase for the school district. I know that the school district is under pressure, certainly from the state, but I do not have confidence in the administration of the school district to spend our tax dollars properly, especially additional tax dollars. Couple of weeks ago, the sign at Redwood was coming down, and I learned that...
Good evening. Even though I live in the Simi Valley, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone here about a matter that should be of great concern to all Americans. About seven weeks ago, Mike Antonovich, who's been a member of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, had the guts to come out and talk about the cost of illegal aliens to every county here in California. It was on the evening news for millions of people to see here, and he said, "Los Angeles County had to pay $600 million in benefits to the children of illegal aliens." Well, I think, ladies and gentlemen, and my fellow Americans, common sense would lead you to reasonably conclude that Orange County, which is quite likely our second most densely populated county here in California, must have had to pay at least $300 million. And again, I think it's quite reasonable to conclude that here in Ventura County, we quite likely had to pay 60, at least $60 million in benefits to these children and to other illegal adults who managed to manipulate the system. I would like your support to have you contact your Ventura County Board of Supervisors, state and federal legislators, and please ask them for funding for at least one full-time ICE officer here for Thousand Oaks, and at least eight for Ventura County. We could definitely use their great services. Thank you very much, and I would like to leave you a copy of my letter. Please don't hesitate to contact me. I will be more than happy to explain my plan to you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Duckett, followed by John Fonti, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. A couple of weeks ago, I was shocked and certainly surprised to find out that I do not have to vote for the tax increase for the school district. I know that the school district is under pressure, certainly from the state, but I do not have confidence in the administration of the school district to spend our tax dollars properly, especially additional tax dollars. Couple of weeks ago, the sign at Redwood was coming down. And I learned that a reader board sign is going up. So, I called the superintendent to find out if they need all these tax dollars. Why are they putting up one of those signs at a corner that is strictly a residential, quiet corner of Thousand Oaks? Strictly residential, at Gainesboro and Camino Manzanas, a reader board sign. Then, a week later, it was announced that one of their very important programs at Redwood was gonna be canceled because they didn't have the funds for it. So, the parents got together and put on Flea Market, or I don't know what you call that. So, apparently, the school district can run on additional money from Flea Market-type sales. They don't have to depend on tax dollars. Now, I do not agree with the previous speaker that said that these issues are strictly political. They are not political. These are about aesthetics and what the community is represented by these signs, these reader board signs. This reader board sign is not, that is not the place for it, and that money would be better spent on additional learning programs in those schools. So, I am going to lead a tax, a program against additional tax money for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. John Fonti, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by Jerry Jane.
John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. I'd have to agree with the previous speaker, but not the two persons, two speakers ago, because this matter of the auto mall sign is not a partisan issue. It never was, and just because the Democratic Party sent off an email doesn't make it political. God forbid. Maybe if the mayor pays attention, it would be good for the audience, if he could listen. Thank you. Tonight, you have three controversial items on the agenda, Mr. Fox. I assume you did that so the bad press doesn't go on and on like it's been lately. But you can just get it over with in one fell swoop, this way. The never-ending auto mall sign saga, the term limits initiative, and the obscene lifetime healthcare benefits for council members tonight. What I suggest is, rather than having a tortuous meeting lasting until midnight, we could all be out of here by 7 o'clock. Just tell the public you all support term limits. Number two, you all agree with the public that the auto mall sign should be no bigger than the existing sign, and with no LED reader board. And three, that you will give up your obscene healthcare benefits right now. That's easy. How about that? But no, you won't do that. God forbid you do the right thing for a change. The council majority abhors the very popular term limits because, let's face it, you like the perks and power of public office. The council majority wants to help its friends and campaign contributors, the auto mall dealers, get the biggest, baddest, brightest sign it can get away with. And lastly, you love the free lifetime healthcare benefits for you and your dependents. So, here we will be tonight, probably till midnight. Later on, I'll be passing around an order sheet for coffee and sandwiches. Thank you.
Debbie Gregory, followed by Jerry Jane, followed by John Anderson.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Gregory, and I first would like to thank all the residents and the people that have come here to participate in the process. Whether I agree with you or you agree with me, I thank you for taking the time away from your families, your businesses, your charities, to be here and speak. Thank you very much. And speaking of the residents and the speakers, I'd like to see some respect for them tonight. So, I'm gonna ask a few requests of the city council. Stop shuffling papers. If you're not prepared for this meeting, then you shouldn't be on the council. It's a public meeting. The operative word is "public". That means sidebars between certain council members drawing the public meeting, the city attorney, or the city manager, having private conversations with one or two council members is unacceptable. So, let's not do that tonight. Let's respect the people that you're elected to serve. Also, I'd like to talk about respecting them. Tonight, we're seeing renderings of the sign. It's a study session. And then, this auto mall's gonna come back in two weeks, on April 26th. That's two days after Easter, a time when many people go away to be with their families, take a long weekend. And I think it's planned that way intentionally so there'll be less public participation. On the 26th, we will see the final version of the sign, and that's when you vote on it. That's insulting. All these people are putting their time and energy thinking that you really care what they have to say or think, but obviously, you don't. I implore upon you to change the meeting so that the final sign can be viewed by people, we can make intelligent comments, and it is in two days after a major holiday. Why don't you just put it on the consent calendar like you did with the $6.6 million loan? And let's talk about money, okay? Let me give you an example. The auto mall has paid in property taxes. Each of us pays property taxes. But they just received $2 million back in property taxes to reinvest, okay? Then, on top of that, pretend you're buying a house, and you get a $2 million gift from the city, your property taxes back. Then, on the consent calendar, without any notice, the city gives you a $6.6 million loan, a 30-year loan, at the five-year treasury rate. Tonight, the five-year treasury rate is 1.8%. So, you're gonna pay 1.8% for 30 years on your home? That's a pretty good deal. I'll take it, every seven days a week. I think everybody in this room would. But what's, what's the bad part about this is there was no notice. It was on the consent calendar. The council members weren't prepared, but the auto mall had the opportunity to review the agreement and sign it. Now, we all know that they're astute business people. They're not going to sign a $6.6 million loan without making sure it's in their best interest. Why isn't the city's best interest and the residents' best interest taken into account? Thank you.
Jerry Jane, followed by John Anderson, followed by Todd Lundy. Jerry Jane. Okay? John Anderson. Todd Lundy. Nick Kidway. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Anders. Oh, was he here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
You're Jerry.
I am Jerry.
Very good, alright.
Thanks. Mayor, city council members, city attorney, city manager. My name's Jerry Jane. I've lived and worked in the City of Thousand Oaks for close to 12 years. I felt compelled to attend this meeting due to the recent ad that the gentleman brought up in the local newspaper last week. The ad portrayed city council members as being blind. I'm here tonight as a show of respect and show of support for the entire city council and staff, for the entire City of Thousand Oaks. I've volunteered my time during the past two years working with various city staff on a number of community-related projects. I know firsthand the love and dedication that all of these individuals put forth with all of these daily activities that they do. The ad that I saw in last week's paper really irritated me, and I have to disagree with how out of control these various issues have become at our local level. The city council makes difficult decisions on a regular basis and has the best interests of all of us, I feel, in mind when making these decisions. I don't agree with every decision that the city council makes, and I know that you guys don't agree with every decision that you make internally. Each item that the city and council makes is very important to every single resident, some decisions more than others. Some of the negative attacks as of late are a bit too much for me. These individuals should focus their energy in a positive manner versus what I have seen in the last couple of months. We should all be reminded that the council needs to balance what's best for the residents as well as the business owner. A great deal of our city revenue is a direct result of these businesses, and it's also important to listen to their needs as well and balance the needs of the city and the residents. Please note that many of the residents are aware of your decisions and respect the decisions that each of you make. I'd like to thank you for the service that you give to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Anderson, followed by Todd Lundy, followed by Nick Kidway. Alright, John, you're up now.
Yeah, sure, it's safe. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Anderson, longtime resident of Newberry Park. Thank you for the opportunity to share. My comments tonight are to express my concerns and disappointment with the council's recent analysis and approval of two solar projects in Thousand Oaks, one being at the Service Center and the other at the building on Hillcrest. My comments are twofold. First, on what I consider the absence of economic viability in many alternative energy projects. And second, on what I believe was the misleading analysis and presentation that the city gave to us on the economic viability of these projects. Now, to understand the absence of economic viability, it helps to take a look at what other jurisdictions and countries have done in their efforts to, to what I would label as pushing an agenda of alternative energy sources with little or no regard for economic consequences. For those of you here this evening that read publications like The Wall Street Journal and Investors Business Daily, you will recognize these stories and examples. Reading from an article as recently as March 1st in Investors Business Daily, Spain has lost 2.2 jobs, regular economic jobs for every green job they have created. In Great Britain and Scotland, they have documented over 3.7 jobs lost for every green job that's been created. Holland is now the first EU country that has abandoned its alternative energy objectives because of the high cost of alternative energy sources. Basically, these countries have heavily subsidized alternative energy projects, as America is now trying to do, dramatically increasing the cost of production, resulting in overall output drops and job losses. So, what does this have to do with Thousand Oaks? Last month, the City of Thousand Oaks approved, maybe it was late February, two solar projects. The project at Hillcrest has a minimum cost of $1.6 million, an estimated annual savings of only $60,000, which is a payback of at least 27 years. The project at Hillcrest has a minimum cost of $943,000, an estimated annual savings of $25,000, and a payback of nearly 38 years. These projects are not economically viable. If my understanding is correct, these payback periods are longer than the life of the equipment itself. Each of these projects has three funding sources, approximately 30% from federal taxes, 30% from state utility fees, which are taxes, and approximately 30% from the City of Thousand Oaks. With paybacks of 27 and 38 years, these projects simply are not economically viable. But when presenting these projects to the public, the city represented only the cost of the city's part of the project rather than the total cost of the project, and this, I believe, is misleading. Federal dollars and state dollars are just as real to us. They are taxes that we need to pay, and taxes that our children will need to pay. And my time's up. Thank you for the time.
Todd Lundy. And our last speaker is Nick Kidway. Good evening, sir.
Todd Lundy, Thousand Oaks, California. And, council members. Or, excuse me, Mayor Fox, council members. I see a lot of problems with this auto mall, and I'd just like to point them out to you. I mean, you can, oh, I promised my wife I'd keep my hands down. But anyway, your nose-in-front parking. The reason why we got rid of that, we used to have that here in Thousand Oaks, was it actually happened down in front of Dolecker, where a man was getting out of his car. A car was backing out. It was hit, and it trapped his legs. The guy later died. We got rid of it. It's trash. Now, I know that your council, I knew Paul Noel, which was the first city council, or city attorney here in Thousand Oaks. And he was also my dad's business partner. And we spent a lot of times talking about his work here in the city. And one thing he did tell me, and your city council told me the same thing, and it's not the first time I've heard those words, that you have immunity through design. You took it through the city, and it's immunity. Well, that works for the first two or three accidents, and then after that, you have a design problem. And then you've got your city attorney in the, in the courts, trying to defend, saying it's safe to have people back into oncoming traffic. It's a losing proposition. And I suggest you take this to an outside source to have a different attorney just, just put a, it would be money well spent, put, put a, his opinion on it. Because I believe our city attorney is too close. When she can turn an electronic billboard into a message center, you can turn a B-52 into a butterfly. It doesn't make it a butterfly, okay? And, you know, it's little splashes of the old city. We used to have nose-in parking, until I saw the, I just saw the, the picture of the new auto mall sign that's gonna be developed here tonight, or unmasked here tonight. Until I saw it, I never thought there was a chance we could bring back Jungleland, but you're doing that. I mean, you should see this thing. You're building an auto mall sign around a billboard. Now, I've done some research on the auto mall. It's one of the 10 top places in the nation to sell cars, or maybe the state. It's also the largest auto mall. And it's not because people don't go there. People go there because they're professional. They look like they're ready to set business. They don't have a gorilla in the front holding up a car. I mean, are you gonna buy a car from a guy that puts a blow-up gorilla in the, in his front yard? Are you gonna buy someone that, that is there to do business? Mr. Fox? I'm over here. Okay. I just think you're making a terrible mistake, and I honestly believe you need to rethink this. And please, take this to an outside city attorney to get his opinion on it. Will you be able to defend the city against nose-in parking? Because it's a lose-lose proposition. That's why we had to get rid of it. And I guess that's all I got to say other than I'm, I'm completely against this sign.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick Kidway.
I beg in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Kidway. I'm resident of Newberry Park, director of concerns at the City of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor, City Council. I would like TO TV to show the overhead. We are having, the residents from India, that our Thousand Oaks residents and Indian neighborhood We are having the residents from India, that are Thousand Oaks residents and in the neighborhood, are having a fundraiser on the 23rd, on Saturday, on the lawns here. It's a great way to give money, as well as have a lot of fun, there's dancing, Indian music, and we might even talk about the auto mall sign. One of the most exciting things happening, Mayor, I think you're reading your green packet now, thank you, happening right now is, I mean, there's no courtesy in this chamber as people can see. Thank you, sir. This is most important. Governor Brown has proposed the elimination of all the redevelopment agencies, and TO TV can show, this is the State of California property tax pie. Can you believe that the redevelopment agencies receive 12% of all the property tax in the state, which is $5.4 billion? Schools only receive 37%, which is $6.5 billion, and the cities still get $7.5 billion. The estimated property taxes paid every year are $45 billion. The cost of redevelopment to the people of California. Total number of these agencies, phantom agencies that put six, I mean, 1.3% loans on the consent calendar are 425 in the state, can you believe that? And they have project areas, we have two in the city, that are a total of 749. Almost all of our business district is redevelopment agencies. All the money goes to these rascal phantom agencies that nobody even will advertise when they're running, that they're running for this. The total redevelopment revenues are $6.8 billion. If TO TV will show, this is Los Angeles County. These numbers are from Mr. Chang's website, and he has a book on it. Basically, the total indebtedness just for LA County is $20 billion. Since my time is almost up, I would ask the people to, there's only one Republican that is needed to pass this thing. My friend, Chris Norby, is already on board. All we need is one Republican. Jeff Gorel is in Afghanistan, he cannot wait. Strickland cannot vote because he's on the other side. So I would really appreciate, a very small thing that you can do is try to get the Republicans on board. In the last eight seconds, we had a community activist called Wes McDonald. He died, and his funeral is going to be held on Thursday morning at 10:00, Mayor. I don't know if you can attend, he was a traffic commissioner, and there's a live viewing, there's a viewing at St. Pascal's tomorrow, Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That concludes our public comments. We'll move to item seven, that's the City Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Do we have any items we want to call special on those? If not, do we have a motion?
Mayor, we have a speaker.
We do. Mr. Kidway.
Happened so quickly, I'm not almost ready. First of all, basic things, I, consent calendar, according to you and everybody else in the country, is for routine items, not for items without notice that involve $6.6 million. Number C is the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Parking Structure Management Contract. I'm glad that you have that on the agenda, but you had on the agenda, it's been two years now, I guess, to paint that structure. I mean, it's a thing that has been left unsightly, and it was actually passed, and then I was shocked that the city was able to rescind on the contract because they didn't have the money. I mean, these are the kind of priorities that we would like to see, rather than so much time being spent and money given to redevelopment agencies. It's an eyesore. City street rehab projects on Lawrence Drive and Teller Road, et cetera. You're having the capital budget again, and this is April again. Last year, in April, you showed on your agenda that my neighborhood, the Running Springs Track, the cities would be redone. I asked about it in the fall, and I was told that the city is going to save money, so we have joined them together, many projects, and it will be done. But that's the thing, the clock does not, there's no priority for the residents or people. I mean, when is that going to be done? Maybe the city manager can enlighten us. I mean, the streets are just falling apart, and it's going to cost more money the longer it is delayed. The minutes. It's interesting, I mean, that citizens who speak on public comments, or even in the public portion, that you will not even say if they're taking a pro or con, and just names appear. But when there are too many, as in the case of the auto mall today, and it happened on February 22nd, you have a chart, and in the chart, like the good old days, you have at least pro and con. So I mean, you have the pro people and there are con people. So, I mean, don't make us feel ashamed of the process. I mean, it's unbelievable that some people come and chastise activists or people who take an active part, as if we are some kind of, I don't know, people who are sinking the boat or something like that. I mean, if you did the right things, like the Conerackin Park District, I mean, they don't have any money, and I remember the good times, I used to talk with Dr. Gillette after the meetings in the parking lot for half an hour. They let you speak in the beginning, they let you speak at the end of the meeting, they don't cut you off, and they, in fact, welcome people. I mean, if this, the power comes from the top, it shouldn't really come from the bottom up, but in actuality, in this chamber, as you can see, it comes from the top, and we are abused so much for just participating in the process. For God's sake, change your ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, item seven is the Consent and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Any items want to be called special? Mr. Gillette.
Move consent.
All right, Mr. Gillette moves. Discussion, vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0, and I just need to read the ordinance titles. An ordinance replacing in its entirety provisions of Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4, and adding Article 5 of Chapter 10 of Title III, the purchasing code of the City of Thousand Oaks. Item 7K is an ordinance amending municipal code to add or modify Sections 9-4.202, 9-4.1402, 9-4.2402 to define building materials, building material storage, and sale yards, hardware stores, and home improvement centers, add home improvement centers to list of uses allowed with special use permit and C3 zone, and establish parking standards for home improvement centers, MCA 2009-70126. And item 7L is an ordinance amending the code Title VII and Title IX regarding provisions for approval of special use permits and other planning permits, procedures for inactive planning applications, extensions of time for planning permits related to tentative maps, retitleing RPD OS zone as RPD SP zone, and repeal of airport plan development zone and other obsolete code sections, MCA 2010-70418.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Move to item 9A, that's our study session of the replacement auto mall identification sign. And Ms. Bedrosa, are you going to provide the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Fox, and members of the council. Tonight, we have the study session for the auto mall sign, and what we're going to do, we're going to start off with staff presentation, and then we're going to have the auto mall come up and speak about the different designs. This slide represents just the auto mall area in general, and it's, we have on the north and south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the freeway to the south, and Auto Mall Drive going throughout the auto mall. And this slide represents where some of the signs are along the freeway where they are located, and first of all, the existing auto mall sign is around Court Avenue, and then in front of it, it's about 300 feet away, the freeway sign is the overpass sign, and then to the south, about 800 feet to the south, is the Amber Alert sign. And in December 2010, the city council approved the improvements to the parking and landscape project, and then other amenities also, but also defer the auto mall sign to be heard later on. With these improvements, what resulted in that the existing auto mall sign is going to have to be removed and relocated. Basically, this is a picture of the existing auto mall sign, and it has the time and temperature and date, and also, the proposed auto mall sign was reviewed as part of the original parking and landscaping project, and it was reviewed by the, it was reviewed by the Citizens' Advisory Committee, and some of the recommendations were presented to the planning commission, and it was presented as in conjunction with the parking and landscaping improvement project. And in December 2010, the Auto Mall Association decided to have the auto mall sign be taken out of the landscaping and parking project hearing, so they can get more outreach to the public and get more feedback. So the council did not make an action on December, on the sign. Two outreach meetings were conducted, and one in January 26th, and the second one in February 10th, and on February 22nd, the city council conducted a study session. This study session, new designs were introduced by the auto mall, and feedback was provided by the public and council to the Auto Mall Association. With that in mind, the auto mall went back and redesigned a couple options, and they will be presented shortly to you, and the first option was prepared by Yesco, who is the auto mall consultant, and is also their preferred choice, and the second option was designed by Signs Now and Signature Signs. And this table does a comparison of the different signs, and as far as area and overall dimensions, and the first column, we have the, what it is now, the existing sign that is right now located on the Auto Mall Drive, and then the second column has the previous proposal, which is the one that the advisory committee made recommendations on, and that was presented to the council, but was not heard by the city council, and then it has Option 1 and Option 2. And we can go into some of the detail, but basically, the areas vary from the existing sign being 20 by 30 to the previous proposal, 35 by, almost 37 feet, and then from there, the Option 1 and Option 2 have been reduced in size, both in overall height and in overall area as well. The reader boards had also been reduced from the previous design of 12 by 21 feet to 8 foot 8 by 18 and 8 foot by 12 in the different options. The process that is going to be followed is that first, we're going to hear the presentation by the Auto Mall Association, which I have this slide right after this, and questions could be asked of the auto mall. We're also going to be receiving public comments, and then discuss options with the Auto Mall Association, and then the Auto Mall Association will present final design proposals, and those will be brought back to the city council on April 26th as part of a public hearing in addition to the ordinance that will set the parameters in the municipal code and the conceptional design resolution. With that in mind, I'm going to pass it on now to Susan Morata from Silver Star Auto Group, and also the president of the Auto Mall Association.
Thank you, Claudia. Mayor Fox, council members, city staff. Susan Morata, I'm a resident of Simi Valley, and like Claudia said, I'm the president, the current president of the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall Association. Keeping in mind that this is a study session tonight, the sign renderings that we're going to present to you are a work in progress. They're not sealed in stone yet. We are here to get more input from council. This has been a long exhaustive process of, a year and a half ago, going through the Citizens' Ad-Hoc Committee process that resulted in the 35-foot sign that we originally proposed. It's the other one, Scott. The other sign. But it's been a long process, but I think it's been a good process, because out of this, I think we are going to wind up with a sign that adheres to the strict design criteria that this city has set, and it's still a useful tool for the auto mall. We need to keep in perspective what the auto mall is asking for at this point. We currently have a 20-foot sign in place with an electronic message board. We are going to replace it now with a sign that is similar in height, and it has an electronic message board. We're replacing old technology with new technology, old design for new design, but there's an existing sign there in pretty much the same spot. And again, look where we came from. We had a 35-foot-high sign with, originally came out of the Ad-Hoc Committee, it was a 12-foot by 25-foot reader board. And if you're looking at, for instance, the Yesco design, which was, when Claudia said it was our preferred design, that was the one the auto mall dealers have been leaning towards, but because of this study session, we decided to bring a couple of options, because we have a local sign vendor that's also, has a viable option, so we wanted to get your opinion on what you think looks appropriate for the auto mall. But the Yesco design, at the top of the reader board, that height is 18 feet 8 inches. There's decorative trees, oak trees, that bring it to 24 feet high. If that is too high, and you want the oak trees removed, that's for you to tell us. The current sign, as it's drawn now, is 37 feet wide or so, and again, it's a work in progress, because we haven't taken it to the point that we know if that's actually going to fit in the new area, and there's several things we can do. We can reduce the size of the water feature. We've also talked about opening up underneath where it says Thousand Oaks Auto Mall, making it an archway, so you can still have that meandering sidewalk go under the sign. So like I said, it's a work in process, and we'll take your advice on what you'd like to see. As far as the content, what is going to appear on the message board, we got direction last time from council members. Councilmember Irwin was pretty specific as far as reduce the size of the reader board to something closer in size to what's in front of the Civic Arts Plaza, and to limit the content, to limit, not have any ads flashing up about 0% financing and what have you, and we're fine with that, and it actually makes good sense, because we still feel that the strength of this auto mall is the fact that we have so many brands to offer in one location. So we are fine with just showing the logos of the various franchises that are available at the auto mall. And then also, maybe every three or four slides that come up, it would display our website address, which we've been developing, we're almost there. We've got a new website, and that's where people go to get the bulk of the information about what's available at the auto mall. We'd also still like to do time and temperature, because people like that, and I've mentioned this before, that when that time and temperature goes out on the current sign, we get dozens of calls that it's out. We'd also like you to still consider doing community messages on there. Every nonprofit that I've talked about are so excited about the prospect of being able to put community messages up there, or just inspirational messages, or just something that's going on in the City of Thousand Oaks. So we still offer that opportunity if you so deem that it would be appropriate. And we'd also like city staff to possibly consider a six-second dwell time instead of an eight-second dwell time for the logos, since it isn't a lot to process. If somebody's driving by, they don't have to read a lot of content, so that eight-second dwell time, I think, was to, you know, it's a safer dwell time when you've got a big message out there, but that's something we'd like you to consider as we move forward. That's pretty much all I have. I am going to offer an opportunity for the representative from Yesco to speak a little bit more about some of their sign, and I know Scott Bailey is going to talk about some of the aspects of his sign as well, unless you have any questions with me right now.
Questions for Ms. Morata. Ms. Irwin.
One question that I had was, were you planning on putting multiple dealers on at the same time, or just showing one dealer at a time?
We really haven't gotten that far. I mean, the way that I know that, we had a little PowerPoint, do you have that little PowerPoint where you can show, it has enough room, I guess, to put two, but I think it's, we really haven't gotten that far. You want to show that, just where it kind of shows the individual logos? And I think this is an eight-second dwell time here. So you can see it, you know, pretty good. So, like I said, we're not sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, Susan.
Any other questions? All right, very good.
Is this when Ken comes up?
Sure.
And so Ken Pearson from Yesco is going to talk a little bit.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate very much the opportunity to be here, to speak to you tonight, and to participate in this process. We were invited by the Auto Mall Association and Susan specifically to get involved with helping them with design issues specifically, and trying to come up with a design that accomplished several goals that they had set forth, that they were, at least to the point that they started talking to us, having a difficult time achieving, coming up with a design that was aesthetically pleasing, that hopefully met the community standards, which I know are rightfully so stringent, and also accomplished goals for the mall, the auto mall itself, of identifying the property and the uses on the site. And so you're seeing, at least to this point, the culmination of those efforts so far, and as Susan mentioned, it's a work in process, which we're enjoying participating in. Just to briefly discuss where we are at, at this point, our philosophy behind the design concept was to identify the brands on site with an aesthetically pleasing design that would conform with community standards, that addresses issues with respect specifically to the LED component, that addresses issues of brightness, message hold times, transitions, and other various programming content issues that you might have questions about, and readability, of course. That was also an important factor. We're dealing with a sign that... We're dealing with a sign that is not only trying to effectively identify the mall and the 25 brands that are on that mall, many of which are functionally invisible from the freeway, but do so in an effective and safe manner with traffic that's driving by at 60 miles an hour plus on an eight-lane wide freeway. So it's quite a challenge, and that's what we're trying to, those are the objectives we're trying to meet here. So mainly today, I mean, I have some prepared information. I could, you know, read a lot of information about a lot of different topics tonight to help try to answer any concerns or questions that you might have. But mainly, I'm here in support of the Auto Mall Association. The topics that I can address, if you have specific questions you'd like to ask with respect to whether the mall needs a sign to be competitive, what the consumer buying habits are of car buyers these days, that was a question that was apparently brought up at staff, whether the signs are a distraction, brightness issues, power consumption issues, multi-tenant panel sign versus an LED display, effectiveness of these types of displays, and even the question that seems to always come up when we're discussing LED signs in various communities is, you know, we don't wanna become Las Vegas, which we hear a lot, and we more than happy to try to address that type of issue as well. So I'm here to answer your questions the best that I can. I won't go through and read this whole thing right now in respect of time and just how long the last meeting went.
Thank you, sir.
We'll leave it up to discussion.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Ms. Bill O'Pina.
Good evening, Mr. Pearson.
Evening.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a few technical questions regarding the sign. First of all, the proposed reader board is six times bigger than what is currently on the current sign. Six times bigger. Second, how bright will the LED be of this proposed sign? Is it gonna be the same brightness as the marquee that is outside of City Hall?
It is actually the same technology. That's actually a product that we manufactured and installed for the city.
Okay.
It's the identical product.
Okay.
And to, your first statement wasn't actually a question, but to address that, the six times larger aspect of this, that component that's there now on the existing sign has no ability to advertise brands whatsoever. It is strictly for time and temperature and was designed to do just that.
Okay. Then how bright will it be at night versus daytime?
Well, let me see if I can try to answer that in a way that, not sure if I understand the question you're asking. The product is identical, for as I said, to the sign that's out front of the Civic Arts Plaza. Our signs are designed, depending on the resolution of product that you buy, there's different resolutions of LEDs. By resolution, I mean the pixels of light are actually spaced closer together for a higher resolution sign. So we have a different mixture of product lines. So depending on which product they pick, the brightness is measured in what they call nits. It's a measure of illuminance. And that's, to get that measure, you have to actually have a special gun and aim it at the sign and measure the brightness. Our signs, while they're some of the brightest signs in terms of capability in the market, we factory set the signs to run at 85% of their full brightness capability in the daytime to compensate for the ambient light conditions during the day when you're in full sunlight. And then at night, the signs are factory set to dim down to 10 to 15% of their total brightness capability. Now, within that range, there's also 1,024 levels of dimming capability through a photosensitive dimmer. That's part of the system that accommodates changes in the ambient light conditions during the course of the day and for various weather conditions such as cloudy days and things like that. So within those factory settings, you can also, this will happen automatically, the dimming will occur so that with 1,024 levels of dimming, you're not gonna, the human eye isn't gonna pick up on the fact that it's picking up an intensity or dropping down an intensity, but it's adjusting for the ambient light conditions. And then in addition to that, there's always manual settings that we can do in the field for adjusting for light conditions that are on site. The final measure of brightness that maybe is maybe more specific to the question you're asking me has to do with how we measure brightness, and that's typically using the foot candle meter. And the foot candles generally are accepted in the industry, and this is following a study by a gentleman named Dr. Ian Lewin, who is a lighting engineer, who was brought on by the International Sign Association as a consultant to do a lighting study on these digital signs. And based on his study, his recommendations were to have digital signs not give off more than .3-foot candles, more than the ambient light conditions. So you'd simply take a light meter out to the site, you would measure, you would do this at night, measure the ambient light conditions by foot candle meter with the sign off, usually from about 100 feet away from the sign. And that would take into account all the ambient light given off from parking lot lighting, the freeway lighting, any other sort of light sources that are in existence on the site. And then you would turn the sign on, and you would take those readings again. And if the difference is within that .3-foot candles, then that's what our industry deems as acceptable brightness levels.
Would you say it's a fair assessment that the proposed reader board would exceed the brightness of the current Amber Alert sign?
Of the current what?
Amber Alert sign that is right there.
I would, well, first of all, we can adjust it to be whatever brightness the community standards deem acceptable, would be the main point there. But I don't think Caltrans is necessarily playing under those same guidelines, to be honest with you. I don't know what their standards are for the brightness that they run their signs at.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sure everybody followed that great explanation of brightness. Scott Bailey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. Scott Bailey, Newbury Park. Do we have the updated rendition that shows the profiles as well as the comparative angle, view angles that? Okay, well, those don't show the corrected rendering for the primary view. In any case, oh no, that's not it either. In any case, as my colleague preceding me said, these are works in process. We came up with this second revision as a result of some of the comments that we took back from the first council meeting last month, where what I heard said here was that council recognized the need for a new sign, and that that was gonna be granted, and that they recognized that the sign needed to be a little bit bigger, which both options are gonna be, and that the newer technology would be allowed if it were limited to dealer brands and time temperature, and perhaps community message. That said, one of the reasons that I kinda got involved in this is I do have a pretty strong understanding of the community sensibilities. And hearing, the thing that I kept hearing was the largest, the irony is, one of the most important components of this sign is the reader board. But it's also the largest bone of contention. So given the limitations that I heard council were to put on this, we cut back our LED board size to 12 feet, which is still 50% bigger than the existing little flip disc on our old unit, but not quite as long as what Yescow's proposing here. The heights of the reader boards are the same. Both are multicolored units that are comparable in terms of view angles. Ours has 144 quadrillion colors. There are 16 different dimming levels that are tied to software that allow you to control how bright it is and mitigate the colors. Our design, while about four, five feet shorter than Yescow's, is actually two feet taller at the top of the oak trees. The primary structure are the same on both. We took into consideration the landscape plan. We wanted to leave that meandering sidewalk in there, so we don't have to mess with that. We also opened it up further by putting in a window with a water feature. You see a cast concrete bowl that will be appearing on both sides. This is a symmetrical design. On the latest design, the oak trees actually run into the back of the reader boards there. The most outstanding feature, I think, of this offering, and aside from, you know, liking to encourage, hoping to encourage the city and the Auto Mall to keep the largest sign contract the city will have in town as a matter of principle, beyond that, they need to be happy with what they've got. And it needs to be married to what the city will sign off on. So that said, we really put a lot of energy into the focal point of this piece, which is the oak trees on top. I wish we had the most recent rendering. Maybe, can we switch to the, to this? Is it on? I don't see it on the TV. There it is. The oak trees, which are the symbol of the city, Thousand Oaks, and I believe we still have more than 1,000 of them, is a real important focal point for this. One of the biggest problems with the old sign is that it gets lost in the backdrop of the new Rustnik facility as you're going northbound. This gets it up there a couple more feet. It's also, our design is also a little closer to the freeway. We decided that the branding of the Auto Mall was more important than the LED component, so we pushed the LED component back in the design and put the Auto Mall Association identification in front. But these oak trees, these oak trees are made up of six planes of different kinds of patinid copper with varying light sources from below. I mean, it's gonna be just a really gorgeous piece at night. I've got a night view here somewhere that kinda gives an idea. But the idea is that the centerpiece will be lit from the bottom, which will create silhouettes around the outlying oak tree sections, which have holes in them now. This original drawing does not show any holes in the oaks. But it will be a totally lighted piece, and there'll be some highlights, spotlights on the outside edge that really pick up some of the design elements from, some of the varying brightnesses of the copper. I'd like to, this is a joint venture between myself and Signature Signs. Mark, would you like to add what you had picked up with the ad hoc committee?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council. You may recall, I've addressed you once before on this topic. I'm Mark Leif. I'm with Signature Signs, 12-year resident of Newbury Park and co-owner of Signature Signs with my wife, family-owned business here. Signature Signs has been partnering with the Auto Mall Association virtually since the beginning of this process, having had the pleasure to articulate the vision of the Citizens Advisory Committee by providing some of the original renderings that have been broadly distributed and discussed in these chambers and outside in the community in various other sessions. The collaboration of Scott Bailey of Sign Masters and Signature Signs, two local companies, really provides for a fresh design perspective along with the continuity of the prior design discussions. And that's why we're really pleased to collaborate in this regard, which is virtually unprecedented. Some of the things that I really wanted to point out in the current design in terms of continuity from the previous conversations and renderings and the various public comments that have been received through the various sessions are having the archway, which allows not only the open feel, but also allows us to integrate with the current landscape plan, which was very important with the initial renderings to have that consistency. The stonework. Some of the original designs had a different type of stone element, but it's very clear that the citizens wanted something that integrated with the architecture, that was consistent with other types of treatments and surfaces and fascia that they saw around town and most of the newer projects that are having these kinds of upgraded finishes. The integration of the sculptural element as well as a water feature were not, neither of those were in the ad hoc design, but they came through very loud and clear in a number of the public sessions that the Auto Mall invited citizens to participate in. So we really see that carrying across as a new element. Most importantly, the size of the sign is very consistent with the existing. Slightly taller, obviously, if you're counting the sculpture, but it is in line in that regard. And of course, the reader board has been downsized to accommodate that. I wanted to thank everyone for their consideration, the Auto Mall Association for allowing us to continue to participate, and we thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is that essentially the Auto Mall's presentation? All right, very good. Ms. Lawrence?
We have a total of 32 speakers, therefore, the speakers will be allowed two minutes each.
I'll call the speakers in order. We have Omar Mazary, Suzanne Duckett, and Karen, looks like Branham. And I'd like to encourage the speakers, since we have two proposals here this evening, it would be of great benefit for the council if you could direct your comments to one or two proposals and share your viewpoint on those proposals. Omar Mazary. All right. Suzanne Duckett. Followed by Karen Branham and Merv Kop. Suzanne, if you can just give me one moment. The clerk indicated two minutes per speaker. This is our second study session in addition to numerous public meetings. As has been pointed out, we are going to have, in fact, a full public hearing. So I'm gonna ask the speakers, when they come up, please pay attention to the speaker lights and the tone. I wanna get through these cards. We have a very, very busy agenda, so I'd ask you to respect the time limitations. Thank you Suzanne for your patience.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I was disappointed that the Auto Mall did not bring something creative, a different type of sign, signage in front of us tonight. Over the last week, Mr. Sheen checked in at Trump Tower. And I want you to know that Trump Tower does not have a reader board sign. They have a giant big globe. So I guess Mr. Trump, who is like, one of the leaders of marketing and sales, doesn't know anything, according to this group. It's too bad, because if you guys don't get this right, four of you will be fired. Now, precedent setting, how many more signs are we gonna have in this city? Since I realize and understand that you are gonna put this lead reader board sign up there, I wanna put my suggestions in. The superior design is the Yescow design. I would like to make several suggestions on this design. First of all, the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall needs to be first, and the lead sign needs to be after the Thousand Oaks. I also do like, or prefer, or the smaller sign, the lead sign size of the signature sign design. And that is a 12 by 8. Now, the Yescow is an 18 by 8.8. So a smaller sign is far more desirable.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Karen Branham, followed by Merv Kop.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, council members and staff. My name is Karen Branham. I live in Simi Valley. I have worked in the Auto Mall since 1989, specifically for the Lattam family since 1996. I'd first like to say that I was appalled by the article in the Acorn. It was really bad form, and shame on the Acorn for printing it, and shame on Save the Caneo 2000 for advertising it. Next, I wanted to mention a 13-page report that I read. It was compiled by a resident, and there was an awful lot of information in it, yet I didn't find any significance or even correlation between the dealers and dealers without a reader board. Are dealers without the reader board going broke? I don't know. There was no indication. If one does better than- There was no indication if one does better than the other. The one thing we did get out of the report was the need for a joint website, and we have addressed this issue. And I would give you the web address, but we haven't had a board meeting yet to approve it. But once we do, I'll be able to share that with everybody. Finally, I've heard from residents that the sign, if the sign isn't approved, that nothing will change. The fact is, there are no guarantees. The dealerships are family-owned and operated, and it could easily go another way. It could be owned by companies such as Auto Nation or Sonic. These companies are publicly-owned corporation machines with no face. The Thousand Oaks Auto Mall would fit in beautifully with their acquisition strategy, and they will no longer have families to deal with. You can forget about good corporate citizens. You can forget about us sponsoring local Little League and soccer teams. You can take our banners off the high schools, baseball and football fields, because Sonic doesn't care about that. They don't live here, and they didn't raise their families here, and their grandkids don't attend your schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Merv Kop, followed by Jill Letterer, followed by John Fonti. Mr. Kop, good evening. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Merv Kop, excuse me, and I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 30 years. There's no doubt that the 101 freeway corridor running from Santa Barbara to the valley, to Simi Valley, is highly competitive. Competitive for what? The sales tax dollar. And why is that so critically important? The sales tax dollar generally provides the greatest amount of funds for the city's services that we all need and want. The Caneo Valley's top provider of sales tax dollars is the auto mall. Therefore, an aesthetically designed, and I'm not going for options, but an aesthetically designed and constructed sign on the 101 alongside the auto mall will remind citizens of the many activities and events going on in town, plus other important reasons. The sign additionally lets non-citizens know the best place to purchase, lease, or inquire about other vehicle-related problems. Now, items. Now, some say that the proposed signage will lower their property values. Wrong. Property values reflect the nature of the local economy, not an auto mall sign. Silicon Valley property shot up during the dot-com boom, and it burst during the dot-com burst. It reflected the local economy, not an auto mall sign. Having been appointed at planning commission by one of our city fathers, the late Alex Fiore, and I served on the commission from '91 to '95, I voted for our very first sign. If I were on the planning commission today, or the council, which I won't be, I would vote for it again. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kop. Jill Letterer, followed by John Fonti, followed by Paul Ladd. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, city council members and city staff. My name is Jill Letterer, 600 Hampshire Road, number 200, Thousand Oaks. And I'm here tonight representing the 30-member Board of Directors and the 1,300 members of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. Since no vote is being taken here tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity to offer some observations and perhaps perspective to anybody concerned about a new sign for the auto mall. First, both the auto mall and the City of Thousand Oaks have done an admirable job of collaborating with the residents and each other to bring two beautiful proposals here tonight for discussion. Both entities, while doubtless wanting to put this behind them, have made the decision repeatedly to take as long as necessary to bring the best proposals forward to reflect our city. It goes without saying that this is always the way this city and the auto mall have done things. The results speak for themselves. A world-class city that we all choose to call home, and a successful, modern auto mall owned, staffed, and operated by caring, hard-working residents of our community. The business community is well aware of the high priority our city places on careful planning, and it chooses to grow here in spite of that. And, I'm sorry, not in spite of that, but because of it. While we may grumble about it at times, we also have great respect for it, and in fact, take pride in it. If we hit the bar for the City of Thousand Oaks, then we've hit it out of the park. And to say that the auto mall has hit it out of the park is an understatement as well. Successful business is something to be proud of, especially during a recovering economy. It's a culmination of causing almost everything to go right and overcoming the things that don't, day after day after day. Both the auto mall and the city have worked tirelessly to navigate a project that is organically subjective, and the results have been something that we can all be proud of. We believe the process has succeeded and encouraged the community to embrace one of the options presented here by the auto mall today.
Thank you, Ms. Letterer.
Thank you.
John Fonti, followed by Paul Ladd, followed by Richard Odom.
John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. And I'm really disappointed, the fact that you're cutting us down to two minutes tonight, when at the last city council study session, we each had three minutes. I don't know what gives here, just because we have more people, or you just don't want to hear from the people you don't want to hear from? I guess I have to speak fast. In an editorial in Sunday Star, Ms. Marata used the very argument of precedence as justification for the LED reader board. Unbelievable. Just, my eyeballs popped out of my head. So then we go on here, we say, okay, well, who is, who besides the auto mall would want a, another LED reader board? Oaksmall, MovieCo Theaters, Jan's Mall? I can think of one big player in all this. Let me explain. February 17th, the Acorn reported the city's two theaters losing big money last year, half a million bucks. They're going to move, lose even more this year, and even more next year. So here are the pieces of the puzzle. City theaters, big red ink, they need more money. You either got to increase ticket sales, or you got to have money coming from the general fund. Well, when theaters were built, you said, hey, no general fund money would ever be used to subsidize the theaters. But, so you're sort of between a rock and a hard place. So, I think, I think what's going on here is that you guys are using this auto mall sign here as a lead-in, as a precedent for your own desire to get your own digital billboard up here on City Hall on 101 to increase ticket sales revenue, so you can stop the bleeding. After the public commotion dies down on the auto mall reader board, you'll just put one up here on City Hall. So you guys are probably the biggest beneficiary of this whole thing, and it would be nice if you were honest about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Ladd, followed by Richard Odom, followed by Debbie Gregory. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Paul Ladd, and I'd like to address the Mayor Fox and city council and member and staff. I'm one of the remaining dealers in this auto center that is original. The rest of them in this auto center, over the period of years, have went broke, died, or moved away. This auto mall is not a real, successful auto mall compared to other areas that I could mention, but I don't want to go into that at this point. I was one of the originals, and I survived by maintaining a super-sales fast. I got a 20-year-old, 20-year people that work for me in my sales department, 20 years, they've worked in this auto center. This auto center needs a sign. I'm going to give you an example. Do you, any one of you know that there's a Fiat dealer in Thousand Oaks Auto Center? Do you? Well, there is one. You don't know it, but if that reader board was up there, you'd all know it. And the people that go by there with 100 and, I don't know, 135,000 people per day would know it. Do you know there's a Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep dealer going to go in there? Do you know that? How do the people that go by this, this area, do you think that the auto dealers can survive with just Thousand Oaks? I moved in here, there was 25,000 people here. I had to be nuts coming here, but I did. And I survived. The rest of them are gone. The point I'm trying to explain to you is, everybody thinks this auto mall is fat and happy. It's not true. There's many changes coming, and you're going to find out about it in the next couple weeks. But I'm trying to give you an example, that you don't know what's going on, the people that go on this, we need to take Camarillo, Simi, Simi's got car dealers going in. Camarillo's got car dealers going in.
Thank you, sir.
My time's up?
Your time's up.
All right, well, I didn't get half of what I want to tell you.
All right. Mr. Ladd, I do have one question. You mentioned that you would be the person to ask. I have a question for you.
Sure, love it.
Approximately, how many people do you employ?
50, and going to have 60 soon.
And since you've been one of the original dealers in the auto mall, do you know offhand how many people the entire auto mall employs?
I'd say about 1,100, 1,200. It's going to increase. You've got dealers coming, and you've got dealers going.
Right.
But the point, the question you want to know is, we, all these people that live in the, and work in the auto mall, I have employees that have been there 20 years.
Right.
You think that these salesmen, car salesmen, move around? Not at my place. We pay them well, and they do, take care of their customers. If you take care of the employees, they'll take care of the customers. You people ought to be thankful you got an auto mall here, for Christ's sake.
Very good, thank you, sir.
You ought to be thankful you got an auto mall here. I came in here, I had to be nuts to come here. I don't know how tough, you want me to keep on? I'll stay here.
No, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
You don't know how tough it was. You might know, because you've been here. But you people don't know how tough it was to be an auto dealer in this Thousand Oaks Auto Center. You guys, at one time, when my architect went in originally to go into the dealer, to get a approval, the guy came out shaken. He said that they told him they couldn't do any of this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
That's okay. Anything else you want to know?
No, we're good.
Huh?
Thank you. Richard Odom, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by Robert Hotson.
Mayor Fox and city council. My name is Richard Odom, I live in Thousand Oaks. I oppose the sign, any sign that's larger than the existing sign, and I oppose any sign that has the LED display board. We seem to have gotten past that because of the comments and the direction that the city council gave to the auto mall last time. But you wonder, and we had a comment earlier in the public comments about the feelings that citizens have, and not as many of them are showing up now because of what took place at the end of the last meeting. But there is a sense of outrage. There is a sense of outrage for the reasons that have been articulated about the campaign contributions, about the fundraisers put on by the auto mall, by the very people who then, right after the election, come in and push this and are seeming to be granted what they want. And it leads to astonishing feelings among the population and the citizens. And it is exemplified by a statement that the president of the Auto Mall Association made publicly in her letter just last week. She wrote in her letter to the Ventura County Star, quote, "The sign will enhance the scenic corridor, not detract from it," close quote. That's what she wrote. And that's the Alice in Wonderland world that the citizens see we are living in. And maybe that's where we are, that's where we are now, but it's not where we're going to be forever, because this is an example of crony capitalism at its absolute worst.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Gregory, followed by Robert Hotson, followed by Carolyn Gallo.
Counsel, I have a point of order.
Giho.
Could I ask a question before you begin the clock? This is a study session, is that correct?
Your clock's on this, Debbie.
Okay, I want to know why the third, Mr. Bear's...
Start the spreaders' clock.
Pardon me?
We're starting your clock.
Okay. I would like to know why, Ms., if this is a true study session, and you want to see the best representations, why you're not also giving equal time to see the presentation by Mr. Francisco Bear that was in the Acorn this week, excuse me, the Ventura County Star this week? I think that it should have equal time, and you should evaluate it, unless it's all about, it's already been decided we're going to have a reader board, and that one doesn't have a reader board, so we're not going to even look at it and make it an option. And that's wrong. Okay? And if you really want to look and be objective, like you say, you should give it fair representation. You know, the scenic 101 highway is a gateway to our city. It's the first thing everybody sees. It's what represents Thousand Oaks to outsiders, to everyone. And you're not upholding the city's aesthetic standards with a reader board. A reader board can become animated, it can become brighter, all it takes is incremental approvals. It can be on the consent calendar, and you can approve something, and nobody will know the difference. And we've seen that this is done. We have a 1974 scenic highway element to the general plan, and 1993 guidelines for the freeway development. They're not being adhered to. And by the way, Mr. Robins' justice does go slowly, but it does come. I just want to say that if you're really going to make this a study session, if you haven't already decided, which it's clear that you have, you will allow Mr. Bear to present his option, so that they can all be viewed equally. Also, having the meeting in two weeks, when the final option is tweeted and comes back, and nobody gets to see it, and it's two days before holiday, is wrong too. But that's the way you do it. You have no respect for the residents that you serve, and you make it clear every time we come here.
Thank you. Robert Hudson, followed by Carolyn Giho, followed by Patricia Seeca. Hotson, excuse me, Mr. Hotson.
Evening, how you doing?
Good evening.
Robert Hotson, 33-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I am opposed to the amending the municipal code for the following three reasons, very simple. Number one, the proposed change is simply not in keeping with the Thousand Oaks general plan, whose tenants include keeping, keeping Thousand Oaks aesthetically distinct from the surrounding communities, maintaining the 101, 23 scenic corridors, the height limitations, no billboards, and other tenants that are contrary to the proposed sign change. Number two, the auto mall's good corporate citizenship that we keep hearing about, the percentage of, the amount of sales tax contributed and so forth. I contend that on a dollars per acre or a jobs per square foot, that the auto mall is on par with the Oaksmall, and the Jan's Mall, and the Oakbrook Shopping Center, and the North Ranch Shopping Center, and my veterinarian, and all those other, many other businesses that are not requesting code changes. Third, the unsubstantiated and unverifiable projections of 15 to 150% increase in sales projections are simply specious. In my, in my business and managing multimillion-dollar programs, guesses like that are extremely career-limiting. With good products, good service, and good pricing policies, the sales will grow with the, with the economy returning. So in summary, make a new sign. In fact, I kind of like signing the option number one. It's still above the height limitation. It's talked about, well, if we could get it down to 20 feet by knocking off the trees, how about knocking off the base and just lowering the whole thing? That's kind of a nice little tree thing. The width is still some seven-plus feet more than the current code. You can reduce a whole bunch of the width by going with the, with the 8 by 12 reader board instead of the 20-foot reader board.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Giho, followed by Patricia Seeca, followed by John Anderson. Good evening.
Good evening, Carolyn Giho, Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to first address Dennis Gillette. I did see the article in the Acorn at April 7, and was interested, because it said he'd been a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1963, and I remember that you are called the council's historian. Good, we need someone who remembers the past signs. The article said, and by the way, I want to say also in that Acorn was the ad that was referred to earlier. You can call that ad labeled frustration. The article that you said, "You understand the passion. The original sign proposal stirred in other longtime residents who remembered the sign blight that characterized Thousand Oaks in the early years of incorporation." In the article, you said, "It was a mess." You were speaking about the proliferation of billboards and signs that dotted the city then. Weren't you part of the whole process of removing these signs that were called blight back then? About today's proposal, you said in the article that you hope that it meets the expectation of residents. I'm glad to hear you say that, Mr. Gillette. Please allow me to reiterate the expectations of residents. We want no LED electronic reader board, and we want no sign larger than the existing sign. Are you listening? Period. So, if you ignore the real will of the people and vote to pass something contrary to that, I will work very hard to unseat you in your next reelection. I will work very hard to unseat you in your next reelection effort. Now, council members Jackie Erwin and Tom Glancy are up for reelection next year. The same promise applies to both of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you ignore the real will of the people and vote to pass something contrary to that, I will work hard to unseat you in your next reelection effort. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patricia Seeca, followed by John Anderson, followed by Tammy Helmuth.
Council members, can you hear me? I've emailed and written letters in opposition to the LED aspect of the auto mall sign. Today I Googled an advanced search saying LED sign and controversy. I stopped after fifty pages. There are protests all over the nation, in Virginia, Pennsylvania, Nevada, Colorado, Texas, New York, Arizona, and other states. Canada, in developing basic regulations for LED signs, has already determined that there are not to be within fifty meters, and that's one-hundred-and-fifty feet approximately, of any highway. And in a highway with a speed limit greater than eighty kilometers, which is fifty miles an hour, they have to be one-hundred-and-twenty meters away from the highway. I also came across data that I feel is germane to this discussion, from independent studies by nonprofit organizations. Glances away from the road for one-point-six seconds or more significantly increase crash risk. Glances of this duration are twice as likely with digital versus conventional signage. LED boards are touted as being green because of lower wattage and greater luminance than traditional bulbs. These claims overlook that with all digital display types, there are requirements for controllers and fans, as well as other auxiliary equipment which increase power demand. Because of the tremendous amount of heat generated by LED lights, an air conditioning unit is incorporated in the unit, full-color LED displays use the most. During the daylight hours, more light is needed to compete with sunlight. Based on documented studies, the proposed sign at one-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet would use approximately thirty-eight thousand kilowatt-hours per year.
Thank you, ma'am. John Anderson, followed by Tammy Helmuth, followed by Phil Kuntz.
Mr. Mayor, John Anderson, resident of Newberry Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to echo the comments of a couple of speakers earlier who thanked all participants. My opinions are polar opposite of many people here, polar opposite of many of my friends, but I still welcome every citizen to come and participate in democracy. It's noisy, it's messy, and sometimes emotional, but darn it, this is democracy, so thank you. I think it was a little disingenuous for one speaker to say, "Hey, we have a display feature now, we'll have a display feature then." We all know there's a substantial difference between the features now and the full functionality of a digital display board. I live near Newberry Park High School, and I've watched the evolution of the displays at Newberry Park, from a few years ago when it was just one color, had some words that changed every now and then, to full graphic displays now. Things change, things evolve without asking the permission of the neighborhood. I thought it was great for one of the representatives from the auto mall to talk about, "Hey, we're local people, we live here. I say walk the walk, and if you're going to have a board, hire a local vendor to work on designing and installing the board. If we must have a board, or, I'm sorry, if we must have a sign, I say please no reader board whatsoever, no electronics." Thank you.
Tammy Helmuth, followed by Phil Kuntz, followed by Diane Hawkins. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I have to say, one, a couple speakers ago, they talked about the dangers of having reader boards and driving by at sixty miles an hour, and you have a one-point-six-second turn. I'm a mother of five kids, grandmother. Schools are sacred grounds for me. We have to make sure our schools are safe. And I want to point out this, I'm going to show you some photos. TOTV, can you display this?
They'll do it.
So, I polled, because I lay my head on my pillow in Ventura, but I pretty much live here up in the Thousand Oaks and run a business twelve hours a day, I polled, I drive by a lot of the schools here, and I want you to know, every middle school has a reader board display. Actually, there are Kalina, which is right now, is it showing?
They did show it.
There's Kalina. Los Cerritos. I will say Redland Middle School does not have one yet, but the ground has been broken to put it in. Keep that in mind, please. Outdated. Sicamoy Canyon does not have one, but they are already in the planning stages of putting them in. Let's move to your high schools. Thousand Oaks. And Westlake High. These are sacred grounds for me. I mean, why would you put something that's going to endanger your kids in a reader board fashion? I think you have to give businesses every opportunity they can have to survive in today's climate. So I am in full support of a business that can have a signage that displays their brands. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Phil Kuntz, followed by Diane Hawkins, followed by Richard Hudson. Let me just comment while Mr. Kuntz is coming. I very much appreciate, council appreciates everybody's consideration in being considered of the time limitations. We have a lot of cards. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, City Council, City staff. My name is Phil Kuntz, resident of Thousand Oaks. Also, for perspective, I'm also a member of the Business Roundtable, and also current chairman of the Greater Canaho, Greater Canaho Chamber of Commerce. But I'm speaking tonight as a citizen. As a citizen, you know, we live in a great town, great schools, great parks, great art, great police department, safe city, rich history and heritage with a close community feel. Those things are important to me. As a father of two middle-school-age students, that's important to me. What I've witnessed lately, though, is this city is being convulsed by local citizens' selling disorder. It's not about what's best for Thousand Oaks. It's not about what, maintaining a quality of life. It's not about maintaining civility. It's not about making our village better. It's about agitating, it's about community organizing, and it's about ginning up hatred against political enemies. There is a minority of a minority of Thousand Oaks residents out and about, resisting change to something that's been looked at, poked at, reviewed by numerous groups, revised as a result, and still it's not good enough. These are serious times, folks. We've got budget problems, we've got library cuts, we've got cuts to the police department. It's time for reasonable adult people to get involved and have serious conversations, and let the children enjoy our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Diane Hawkins, followed by Richard Huss, followed by Louis Goldsman.
Good evening, council. I'm Diane Hawkins, live in Newberry Park. Throughout the last six months or more, we've had phone calls, emails, letters to the editor, and so forth, the majority of which have been against having a reader board sign. And yet today, we have presented two plans, both of which include a reader board sign. Now, the reader board sign is six times bigger than the signs present reader board. I don't think that's moving in the right direction, folks. The auto mall promoted that the interval between displays would be eight seconds in the last two steady sessions, and now we're reduced to six. Hmm, wrong direction. The auto mall said that only the auto brand recognition was going to be featured on the display, and now tonight they're suggesting community service messages. In the Sunday paper, the auto mall tells us that the, both drawings are going to display signs that are the same or smaller than the existing auto mall sign, but Mr. Bailey of the company that introduced one of the signs says tonight that both are actually larger than the existing sign. We have a lot of discrepancies here, but the four that I've mentioned have all gone in the wrong direction. That's disturbing enough, but what's most disturbing to me is that our city council, you must have been in contact with the auto mall all these months, surely you have. You've had phone calls and breakfast meetings, I'm sure. You've had contact, all the while knowing that the majority of the community is opposed. So what does that say? I think what it means is that the auto mall has been given a signal by the city council.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's okay.
Richard Huss, followed by Louis Goldman, followed by Al Adam. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, members of the council, and members of the staff. My name is Dick Hous, and I'm a long-term resident of Thousand Oaks. Rather than rehash the remarks that you've heard at a number of earlier meetings, I decided I was just going to address the three new proposals that I thought were going to be presented tonight. Unfortunately, I only see two so far. I'm flabbergasted that the recommendation of Mr. Adam has not been considered worthy of public discussion. First, the two proposals presented by the Auto Mall Association. I compliment them on coming up with two designs that are aesthetically quite attractive. Unfortunately, they both still contain reader board signs. I assume that all of you saw Ms. Marata's commentary in last Sunday's Star. It attempted to justify an electronic reader board sign by pointing out that there is one in front of the Civic Arts Plaza and at several schools around the city, and we've heard a bit about that tonight. What she failed to mention was the fact that all of those facilities are publicly-owned facilities, and the messages they carry on their boards are public service-type messages that are of interest to large segments of our population. And none, and I repeat, none of the signs are owned by a commercial enterprise advertising products for sale, and none of them are at the gateway to our city.
Thank you, sir. Louis Goldsman, followed by Al Adam.
You mean, that's all the time I get? Even though I called City Hall today and was assured that I would have three minutes?
It's two minutes.
I was assured by your staff that I will have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Did you have a question?
Boy.
Sure.
Mr. Hous, Mr. Hous, Mr. Hous, Mr. Hous. I have a question for you. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. You are a past mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks, and you first have first had knowledge of what the city went through when it set its guidelines, its guidelines to make sure that we don't have any billboard pollution along our scenic corridor, correct?
I have a little bit of a hearing problem. Can you try me one more time?
You, you have been here for quite a number of years.
Since nineteen sixty-two.
You have seen the city evolve.
Yes.
You have seen the city clean up the scenic, or the freeway corridor, or I should say, rid it of electronic, I shouldn't say electronic, but billboards, to maintain the beauty of our surroundings and just have a clean corridor, correct?
Very much.
I also read your commentary in the Ventura County Star, and you expressed as to why you don't think that an electronic reader board is actually feasible or acceptable along the corridor. Can you explain why?
I'm not sure that's quite the message I intended to convey in that letter to the Star, but my real feeling is that there is absolutely no reason to identify dozens of individual auto dealers on a sign along the freeway. The sign out there now says that the auto mall is the world's largest, and I think it's reasonable to assume that if it's the world's largest, it probably has the dealership I'm looking for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Louis Goldman, followed by Al Adam, followed by Marilyn Formato. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Louis Goldman, Thousand Oaks. I don't know the answer to which sign, but I would mention to you, "Gus must non est disputantum," which loosely translated means you cannot argue with taste. So good luck in making a choice. However, I do know one thing, that the council, in making a decision, has to consider all aspects, and not take a myopic or tunnel vision, if that's not redundant, view of the question, and look at just, what does the sign look like? We know that, and I've said in the past, that, you know, if aesthetics was the only issue, we probably wouldn't have a sign at all. But we can't lose sight of the purpose of the sign. The purpose of the sign is to help the dealers compete in their field, so that it will generate sales tax revenue for the city. We know what the city financial situation is, and the state, and the federal government, and it's not likely to get better. And you can't lose sight of that issue. So when you decide on things like size of the sign, size of a reader board, reader board yes, reader board no, you have to consider what are the issues involved, and address them all. The only thing I would ask of council, as individual members, and as a council collectively, is that when you've reached a conclusion, you ask yourself one final question. What are the ramifications and impacts if I'm wrong? And have I considered everything about those ramifications and impacts, so that I have considered them all, and it won't have unintended consequences? And, and I think the problem is, is that many people today have expressed views and have not asked themselves that question, and they really need to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Al Adam and Francisco Bear. I noted your card. Since both of you can talk, I'm going to give you four minutes.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
I noted your card. I'm going to allow you to combine your time for four minutes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Al Adam, Thousand Oaks. Good evening, council members. There is a third alternative. We'd like to present it to you this evening. The city deserves a sign that complies with the scenic highway element, that complies with the freeway guidelines written up in nineteen ninety-three, that is visually distinct and makes our auto mall not just another auto mall on the freeway. And the community deserves to see a sign that has, that is presented with an alternative to a reader board. I called my friend Francisco Bear, talked to him about this, and he kindly consented to design such a sign. He's an architect here in town, twenty-five years, worked with him on some YMCA projects, and he's come up with, I think, a very interesting approach, a holistic approach, makes the city a significant partner with the auto mall, and creates a gateway to our city, which we don't have right now, and displays all the logos all the time, not just one every eight seconds. So if I may, Francisco has a visual display to share with you.
Francisco Bear, Bear was architect. Can you run the animation?
I did have a very quick animation of the sign design, and also if we put the image there. What you'll see there is the idea that it isn't, you know, I keep hearing the arguments about whether reader board, no reader board, and it worries me that so much energy's been spent on whether there should be or there shouldn't be, but not enough energy's been spent on looking at the entire frontage that the auto mall has, and making sure that that's the best that it can possibly, it can be the most spectacular, elegant, nicely landscaped, you know, a lot of special features that demonstrate the city's commitment to a higher-quality environment. And so what this example that I've created shows is how some of those features can be integrated in the sign design, so that they extend beyond whether or not you should just have a reader board on the thing or not. And I think that what I tried to also incorporate, as Al had requested, was what would you do if you didn't have a reader board? How could you display all that? So I was trying to find a common ground that everyone would receive what they needed, but we would also create something that enhanced the city. You'll notice on this particular sample is that I'm showing another sign that is actually a city sign, that's at the terminus of the road. It would have a city emblem on one side, the city name on the other. What it's trying to do is really expand the horizontal dimension of the sign, because I really feel that the other sign has been shrunk down so much because it's been committed to death, and so many people have contributed to its design that it's unfortunately, I think, lost any kind of sort of uniqueness by itself, that I just wanted to show that you've got to expand your vision of where, of what you're doing along this. doing along this frontage and make sure that it can be something great that'll enhance the whole frontage of the auto mall. So that's really the purpose of this alternate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. Francisco. Mr. Barrett has a question.
Mr. Barrett, could I ask you just a quick question on the offering that you put forward? I assume that the discs throughout the sign indicate the auto mall, the logos?
Yes.
Okay. And the two opposing corners, you have an elongated, what did you see there?
Well, actually, those are planters, because what's happening is if, do you have the plant? They're meant to show that the footprint of the sign needs to be expanded to include some unique landscaping that'll distinguish it from the landscaping that's extended throughout the frontage, just so, again, so the sign looks larger. So what you'll notice in the view here, in that particular view, if you could turn that camera on, it shows the two circular elements that are there, which are actually tree wells that are lining up with the street beyond. All that is to create a high-quality area there that could be used for dedications, could be used for special.
No, I got that. What I'm looking at is the actual Thousand Oaks Auto Mall, and then you have the discs.
Right. That represents, each one of those represents a place saver that's approximately 30 inches by 30 inches, that would be an auto dealership logo. And I provided for 32, or up to 35, if you went all the small ones, just in case, but you could even add more if you needed to.
I understand that, but at the opposing corners, you have an elongated disc. Did you have something special in mind?
Oh, that's because I know that some of the dealerships don't have small logos, but actually have names, and so it would be how they would be accommodated if they had a name, for example.
Okay, that's what I need. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, let me, I have a question. Mr. Bear, is your sign lit?
Yeah, you know, again, I spend only a certain amount of time on it. I think the thing to investigate alternate ways of lighting it, the upper portion where the letters are, there's an opportunity to uplight it. Even the idea of the lower elements, they could be backlit, so it's all silhouette lighting. So I think the image I was trying to create with this sign was something that was kind of understated, not a real commercial sign, not a lot of sort of Plex material, and more just subtle lighting. That's kind of the idea. And of course, you notice there's flags, and I'd add the flags because the civic aspect of it, those would be illuminated, and then also just a few trees that are really just meant to be a part of the design, and those would be uplit at night. You know, the lighting from the mall itself is pretty strong, so, you know, we have to be careful how we place those lights so that they don't look like they're not enough. But that's the work. I mean, I've always said that this particular sign requires a lot of design time and a lot of careful study, and you really got to take the time to do it.
Is it your proposal that the entire square there that has the logos would be lit?
Each one would have some indirect lighting in it.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
So, but they're all together, so it looks like that entire square would be lit.
It could, yeah.
All right. Okay, very good.
All right.
Dr. Glancy?
Backlit.
Don't leave yet. Thanks for being here tonight. Can you tell me what the dimensions of the sign is?
It's 26 feet high, and it's the same footprint as the original sign, because what I did is I took the plan of the original sign and basically just developed it at the same location, same width, but made it 26 feet high.
Thanks a lot.
So 26 feet?
Yes.
And you're aware that the options that are being presented by the auto mall, one's 24 and one's 26?
Well, I wasn't aware. I thought originally they were going to be 20, to be honest, but I thought, what I did is I designed it based on the size of the, and the number of logos.
I get it, I just.
Yeah, it was all functional. I mean, that's the key thing. I'm worried that a lot of the restraints that are being placed on the auto mall are sort of arbitrary, and they're doing the best they can with what they're trying to do.
You think?
I think. And then the unfortunate thing in my mind is that the functionality of the sign is just continually being compromised. And in the end, you know, I've lived here for a really long time, and I know other dealers in other locations, and I know other community civic leaders in other cities, and I know that eventually if we build something, they'll look at it and go, well, that's the result of just so many compromises, it's unfortunate. And so what I'm trying to come up with is something that I think you can all be proud of and say, wow, this is a really unusual sign. It's different, you know, it's of a scale and a character that's not the same as others, hopefully, because other signs are about flashiness, but height. The signs of proposing are nice, but they're kind of low for what they're meant to do, in my mind.
I think that's been a degree of difficulty for those that are designing them.
Yeah, I think so, so, yeah.
You got a comment, Ms. Bill Lloyd-Penney?
Well, a comment and a question. I do like the aspect of having a gateway to the city, because right now, as was stated, we don't have a gateway at all. So was that an idea that came up suddenly, or have you always thought that Thousand Oaks should have a nice entryway and welcoming sign on the freeway?
It was, it was an idea that I'd considered, but it also kind of performed a very important function, that is, that it created a larger horizontal dimension to the actual sign construction area. And also, I like the idea that whatever's placed there relates to the street, because that sign that you see for the city is actually lined up to the center line of the street. And so all those things are to integrate it into that context better. But yes, it is a sign that identifies this is one of the entry points into the city.
Now, we mentioned height and how everything is being committed to death or suggested. And I do have to ask the question, is it possible to keep your design at a slightly lower height, such as 25 feet or 24 feet, perhaps?
Well, I think that, you know, that's where I get into problems, and that's one of the reasons that I really sort of held back getting involved in a lot of these groups, because I felt that, you know, nobody was testing sort of the visual requirements for the thing to look right and work right, and that there was a lot of negotiation going on of just numbers and things without something to see. And so in my mind, it's whatever height it needs to be for the signs to be readable, and in my mind, this is the height it needed to be for those signs to be readable.
And obviously, you've read about the strong opposition to an LED reader board, and you decided to come up with something that would not at all include a reader board.
I just wanted to show an alternative, correct, yeah.
Okay.
You know, personally, I can understand their need for a reader board and why they would like to do it. I think a lot of times, the reader boards actually work better when they're higher. It would be nice if it were higher, personally, because it's so low that when you're traveling westbound, coming through the bridge, I mean, I think a lot of people are reading the freeway sign, the other freeway sign, the big one, the Thai, the one that tells you traffic. And so I'd say a lot of people are reading that, because it's in the right place, it's at the right height, and you can see it from far enough away. But if you don't have that, then I'm worried we're creating something that maybe doesn't function the way it should.
Thank you very much for trying to come up with an alternative that does not include an LED reader board. Appreciate that.
Mr. Bear, could you, you mentioned a very important point that's been brought up a number of times by a number of speakers, and inasmuch as Mr. Adams invited you, and I'm not quite sure if we're getting paid or not, but again, your perspective on height. Could you just share again your perspective on height?
In relation to?
In terms of, it needs to be high enough so it can be functional.
Right.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, no, the, when you have an animated sign, and here's the other thing I heard tonight, by the way, I had not heard about the eight-second restriction or the six-second, which to me just means, I feel sorry for that sign, because it's not doing what it's supposed to do. It's basically being straightjacketed into something else. But you really need the ability to see the sign a certain distance back to appreciate the content. Plus, you've got to be able to see it change, because if you drive by there and you only see one image, because six seconds or even eight seconds is a long time on a sign, it seems like it's not even performing like an LED sign.
Well, part of that's a safety issue, you know, and I'm sure if the auto mall had their way, they'd like it changing.
Right, but I'm looking at signs everywhere else, and what happens is, if you were to delay it that long, it would have to be so much higher.
Right.
Right, that you would be able to see it from farther away, therefore, it's in your, you know, you don't have to kind of look to the side or anything, you can see it from far enough back, but it's so low that I don't know that it's going to perform properly.
You're actually making many of the same points that the auto mall has made over the last several months, but here we are. We're trying to find some common ground.
Right. And I was just trying to help, because I thought that, you know, I hate for them to end up with a sign that doesn't do what they want it to.
Very good.
Great.
We appreciate your efforts. Marilyn Fumato, followed by Yvonne Avis, followed by Nick Kidway.
Mayor, just one footnote, if I may.
Sure.
I'm sorry. This is a concept, and just like any concept, it's subject to discussion. That's why what we wanted tonight was some discussion and subject to change. The reader board is certainly a big issue, and so is the height, and the height on this particular concept is also adjustable, negotiable, and all the things that it would need to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Marilyn, I don't know if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. What's that? Just give it to the clerk. Yep, great. Followed by Yvonne Avis, followed by Nick Kidway.
Well, I've tried to cut this down so it may not be as coherent as I originally planned. My name is Marilyn Fumoroto. I'm in Newbury Park, from Newbury Park, California. I have now been to several of these auto mall meetings. At each meeting, the auto mall has insisted that it needs a new, very large LED, a sign with LED feature. When citizens have argued that such a sign would be contrary to Thousand Oaks sign ordinances, and that a majority of informed Thousand Oaks residents are deadset against it, and that it would set a precedent that could forever ruin Thousand Oaks skyline and unique character, auto mall representatives have just pushed back harder. They say this sign is essential to increase their business. Something has always puzzled me about these meetings. I have never once heard the auto mall offer any evidence to support the claim that a new giant LED sign is necessary to their continued success. I began to search for factual information to either support or disprove the auto mall's claims. This led me to a national online advertising organization that handles over 20,000 automobile dealerships across America. I obtained a copy of a study based on interviews with 1,500 consumers who purchased vehicles from California dealerships. The survey was conducted in January 2011 by an independent market research firm. The study focused on two key points: advertising sources that help shoppers research and find a vehicle, and advertising sources that help them purchase their vehicle. Now, because of the shortness of time, I'm not going to tell you, I'm not going to go through every single one of the areas that they covered, but the, of interest are that in the research report, 65% of potential automobile buyers use the internet during the shopping process prior to purchasing a car.
Thank you, ma'am.
9% were influenced by outdoor ads, and outdoor ads are billboards and signs.
Thank you, ma'am. Yvonne Avis, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Sarah Finch.
That can't be two minutes. I've got something important here to tell you.
It's actually two minutes and 20 seconds now. We really need to move forward. Thank you, ma'am. Yvonne Avis, Nick Kidway, Sarah Finch.
Can I say one sentence? One sentence more?
Please.
Okay. According to the statistical information in this survey, signage has almost no influence on whether consumers shop for or end up purchasing an automobile.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yvonne Avis, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Sarah Finch. You're welcome. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I don't know if this is.
You can move that down.
Is that better? Thank you.
You can move it down a little bit more if you'd like.
More? Okay, thank you.
Much better.
Okay. My name is Yvonne Avis, and I've been with Thousand Oaks, a resident of Thousand Oaks for maybe 35, 37 years from another part of the world. And I have been to three different meetings about the auto mall sign, and I'm still very surprised that the auto mall do not realize that the TO residents do not want a large sign that has an LED board. I can't understand why all of this is going on. Suddenly, we have one being presented, and before, we weren't going to do this. It's my understanding that the newer sign, or the newer design, will be, or could be, only 18 and 1/2 feet, which I read in the newspaper. And if this is so, that would be great. However, at this juncture, I cannot trust what I'm hearing. What I would like to point out is that the old sign with the time and temperature brought in people to purchase cars, so the auto mall made money of this particular, with this particular sign. However, with all the opposition to the sign, I doubt that people will buy new cars from the auto mall. I will not buy a new car. If the sign is put with a huge leader board, I will go somewhere else. And I think a lot of the people who are opposed to this sign will do the same thing. I think, thank you. I think the automobile owners should know, be aware of this. I would hope the city council will not allow the LED board sign larger than the prior sign, because, which has been placed in front of the auto mall. And because I'm so short notice, I won't say anymore.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would like to, I don't want the auto sign because it's going to change the aesthetics of the community.
Thank you. Yvonne Avis, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Sarah Finch.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park. At the last meeting, Mayor, the city clerk corrected you that in study sessions, your rules asked for three minutes. The sad thing is that none of the four council members challenged you to give us the three minutes that your rules asked for. I would ask that, I looked at the green packet, it has a lot of emails, and I would like the city clerk to let us know how many emails have been received, and maybe a council member can tell us how many of those are not the regulars, because those charges have been made. On the statement cards, I would like to know, and the residents would like to know, how many are non-residents, so that we know, get a true count on that. We are being accused of playing with the numbers, et cetera. The mall association president said that the technology has changed, it has been said many times. I will read from the minutes of 1993, when this sign was approved, and I quote, "Motion by Councilmember Lazar to approve appeal in part, sign to be redesigned to eliminate reader board." Reader board was there at that time. Talk about sales tax. Look at the, TO TV, please show this. It's only 4% of the total city budget that comes from the sales tax. There it is, that small part. Show this graphic, please, TO TV. I will go into more detail into that, but I want to show this, this is the concept that I had presented, and Mr. Bear's thing is pretty good, except it's too massive. And so if you have two signs with the logos, it may pass muster, because we do not want no reader board. I hope the TO TV can show this, and I hope somebody will ask me the question, because I'm the only one here probably that has sold signs and is not selling signs, and sold to car dealers, and can I get a question about this ugly graphic that I have put?
Ms. Irwin.
Go ahead, Mr. Kidway. Why don't you?
Thank you, honorable council member. There are 200 dealers that are competing against the TO auto mall, and if you go up north, except for the Oxnard and Ventura, you have to go up to Gilroy before you will find any other dealer that has electronic sign. If you go on the 210, the bad San Fernando Valley has no sign like this. You have to go all the way up to Duarte and Monrovia, even Pasadena does not have the signs, and I just went again to Pasadena. There are a couple of signs, but the grade of the freeway is so high that you cannot see them, you have to really look for them. And the TO, Mrs. Gueye Caroline made this point, that they have the sign already, which is from the Accura dealership to Nefton. And what emphasis should really be done is to the dealers that are on TO Boulevard, like Kemp Ford and Shaver. If you go on the other side, on the 405, you have to go all the way to El Segundo before you will see any signs. And, I mean, that is prime real estate with, in Santa Monica, and that's what I did. I mean, Nora Educas has given you the list of all the signs, but there are 260 car dealers in this universe that they compete against, and then none of them have signs, and they don't need a sign. And so this argument that is made is really bad, and I feel really sorry for the other dealers, because already concerned citizens are saying that they're not visiting the dealers, and if the sign is approved, I can guarantee you that sales will go down. And as a friend of the auto dealer, and especially, we do not like this negative name-calling coming from the auto mall dealer. We'd appreciate people like Steve and Kemp Ford. Thank you for letting me answer the question. I am ready to answer anymore.
Sarah Finch, followed by Mary Weisbach, followed by Ted Chavannes.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sarah Finch. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 13 and 1/2 years, and I just want to say that I am pro-business, and I do, I think that we all, you know, show a very mutually benefi- a very mutually beneficial relationship with the auto mall. However, I am opposed to the huge leaderboard. I did take a look at these signs today, and I really like some of the elements that are in them. I think they need to be scaled down, in my opinion. And I, the leaderboard, I am just so personally screened out. I feel like everywhere I go, I mean, even the floor on the grocery store now has an advertisement. And, so for me personally, I just, I just think we need to draw a line and say, I don't know that the leaderboards are going to do everything that we all think they're going to do. People are not, and the other thing which brings me to is that, I don't want people reading these boards while they're driving down the freeway. There are exit signs, there's exits, right? You know, a quarter of a mile, half a mile, either way. The thing that concerned me about the double-sided sign was I never even thought about having, you know, two sides to the sign. I thought, okay, so now people are going to be exiting Westlake as they're trying to see the last-minute deal, you know, before they exit the freeway. I just don't think that's safe. So anyways, you know, I, I think it'll be exciting to have a new sign. I can see that the, when I saw the overlay, I could tell that, yes, our current sign needs some sprucing up. And I do like stonework, I like the water feature, not necessarily these water features, but I think, you know, it's a step in the right direction. And, yeah, but, so I am opposed to the leaderboard. I hear what people are saying, I just don't think it's going to have the result that a lot of people think it will have. It's just not the way, I just don't think it's going to increase sales that significantly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Weisbach, followed by Ted Chavannes, followed by Tom Cohen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mary Weisbach. Save Open Space Santa Monica Mountains. SOS represents over 1,000 residents in the Santa Monica Mountains region. Save Open Space Santa Monica Mountains asks that you vote no on either giant big-screen precedent-setting LED sign for the scenic 101 freeway corridor. The proposed precedent-setting advertising sign is prohibited by the Thousand Oaks General Plan, which states, "No advertising displays shall be placed within 660 feet of the 101 scenic corridor, i.e. logos is included," in that definition, I believe. The City of Thousand Oaks has amended its general plan many times, but has never touched this law. Let's look at what we've got now. Gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains, our scenic corridor, visual, high-quality, aesthetic character, harmony, visually pleasing. Let's look what the LED giant signs will do. Bigger, garish, gaudy, bright, blight, uglify the 101 corridor, cheapen, billboard pollution. It will set a precedent, who's next, the Oaks Mall? And also, I was looking at this front sign. I usually look at, see what's going on at the Art Civic Arts Plaza, and someone told me the sign had changed, and I, I immediately look away now. This is the way I feel about this bright LED type of signage. It makes you, the brightness and garishness of it makes you look away. I could not, I didn't want to read what was going on at the Civic Arts Plaza, because of, because of the LED component. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ted Chavannes, Tom Cohen, Gerald Mueller.
Mayor Fox, City Council. My name is Ted Chavanne. My wife and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 33 years, and we've enjoyed very much the ambience that we see here. No high-rise buildings, no big billboards. And I, and in fact, our city government should be congratulated for providing this kind of environment that we've enjoyed for the last 33 years. And I really hope that they have the foresight to extend and continue this quality of environment. So we're, and we're all for, you know, the auto mall wants to put up a sign which is aesthetic, to call attention to their business there, which you really can't miss, whether you're going down the 101 or on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We're very much opposed to any kind of leaderboard with the bright lights, that just would detract from the ambience and family life that we've enjoyed here in Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tom Cohen, followed by Jerry Mueller, followed by Chuck Cohen.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Tom Cohen. I'm a 49-year resident of Thousand Oaks. Civil discourse is an important and treasured value. The discord of late has been anything but civil. There's been the name-calling, the baiting, the lies, spread to defame and distort. Want to ask, where has civility gone? Here's another example of the misuse of the public realm. This disgusts me. Why can't we have a healthy discourse of the facts and debate the merits, as Mr. Hotson did, as Mr. Bear did, as Mr. Adam? Why must it devolve into personal assaults and attempts to humiliate? Why are we having a study session if the forum is turned into mudslinging and fear-mongering? The auto mall has brought an application to upgrade its area in a tired 20-year-old sign. Who doesn't disagree that this is needed? The auto mall has done exactly what the process requires. They've redesigned the sign based on comments that is heard both from the public and from the council. Let's talk about the facts. The sign has been reduced in size. The electronic reader board has been reduced in size, and the auto mall representatives have agreed to limit information put up on the board. Look at our high schools, the junior high schools, the city hall. I've always advocated that the auto mall sign should provide public service information as well. I think it can be done. I think that the proposals before you have all been done tastefully, and I think you should give, do consideration. And I feel that including a leaderboard sign will not take away from the scenic highway values we have protected over the years. We have many examples of signs that face the freeway that are tastefully done and approved and accepted without the vitriol. You, as the arbiters of taste, can decide whether the signs you see tonight are of the highest quality and design standards demanded by our city. By allowing the leaderboard, you are not creating a precedent. Let me assure you, the city council approved the existing sign with its time and temperature readings.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jerry Mueller, followed by Chuck Cohen, followed by Chuck Consel. Mr. Mueller. Chuck Cohen. Chuck Consel. Ron Siegel. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Chuck Cohen. Actually, I'm really following my son too, too shortly here, because our messages are very much the same. But with that in mind, maybe mine will be shorter. The, my point relates to the fact that the essence of democracy is citizen participation. Its sustenance relies on honest discussion, not threats, and not some of the intimidation that we heard here this evening. This process is not enhanced or glorified by misguided and misgiving venal ads, which Tom showed you from the Acorn last week. While, actually, I was involved with helping obtain the approval for the last, for the sign that's been up there for the last 20 years. While I favor a refreshing version of that, for this vital economic engine for the city, my observation leads me to believe that the depth of feelings, evidenced to date by the activities of the folks in the, in the community, transcends a valued judgment about this sign, or any sign, or any issue. These business owners, such as Mr. Ladden, have proven their loyalty and their integrity to the city by providing 40-plus years of worthwhile products, and a history of giving back in personal service and charity to this community. They've been selfless in many, many ways, not to say that they haven't made a wonderful living here. As earnest members of the business community, they, at least in my understanding, seek no special favor, no subsidy, and no deviation from city process. It is my view...
You're done, and you're not, weren't as short as your son.
Thank you.
All right. Chuck Consel, followed by Ron Siegel, finally, Tula Kalavos.
Yeah, Chuck Consel, Thousand Oaks resident for 42 years. I don't know. I, I hear the antagonism coming from Mr. Cohen and son. I, I attended this meeting, I, I think we had a wonderful process, working with the people from the mall, and by the way, Andy, you walked out on me last time. I also was a designer, so I'm going to get a couple, a couple more minutes.
Time's running, Chuck.
Well, I'm just, you know, I don't want to come up here and vent, but I got to tell you, you know, I came up with the design for this, and that was the reason. I, you know, nobody ever called me, you know, Mr. Clancy thanked me. And it was, it was interesting, it was outside of the box. And that's what I was trying to motivate, is a creative process. And what I see here tonight, it's the same old stuff we saw, what, five, five, six meetings ago? The same block tower, the same leaderboard, the same, and by the way, Mary Weisbach, I am not for a leaderboard. I just, I want to keep, just let, let you know that. And anyhow, anyhow, I think we can do better. I think we can do better than this. The guy Behar, he all of a sudden shows up, you know, he's a designer. Where was he at, you know, some of the earlier meetings? We can do better than this. We can have a crea, and I'm coming from a creative point of view here. What, what the sign looks like. If you guys want this, is this what you want out there, you know, in our beautiful city? I don't think so. I don't like it, you know, but I don't, but I don't like this structure. I think it's a bunch of shoeboxes put together. So, let me just say, I think they're, I think that's basically it. I think we...
Thank you, sir. Hey, hey, Mr. Consel?
Hey, hey, I write, I write for a living, but I don't write my own speeches, I, you know.
I did want to let you know, you're correct. The last speaker...
But the point I'm trying to make, Andy, and hi, and hello, Dennis, I, I hope you're doing better. Last time I talked to you, you were in the hospital. And I hope you're doing better, I really do. I like you.
Chuck, I did want to mention to you that there was a medical emergency with one of the staff members in the back, and that's why they came out.
Okay, I knew that. I, I knew that. Now, you know, I, I automatically went for the laugh.
All right, very good.
But, but again...
Chuck, your time's up.
I got to tell you guys, just one, just, well, let me emphasize one thing, and I'll, I'll move on.
Okay.
I'll move on. We can do better than these guys.
All right, very good.
We can do better than these signs, we don't need them.
All right, Dr. Clancy has a question for you.
Chuck, don't leave. Chuck, turn around. Go back. Thank you. I've got to ask this. In the, in the drawing that you offered at the last meeting, you did have an LED reader on your offering. Would you still support it?
That was an option, okay? And I had done, I had done that because I had talked to this charming young lady here who was, and I talked to her about that, and I, you know, I'm opposed to the leaderboard. I just don't think it works. I'm opposed, listen, I, I'm opposed to any sign. I'm like my friend Todd Lundey, who I've known for years. And I'm sorry, is Mr. Ladden still here? He's, he's gone. I'd rather not see a, I'd rather not see an auto mall there. I remember when cows were parked there.
All right, we got to move on. Ron Siegel, Tula Kalavos, and Kevin Redner. You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You heard tonight that the ground has already been broken as far as LED reader boards in this community, because they're, they're in existence now at the high schools and junior high schools. Well, that's precisely our issue. If, we do not want the ground broken anymore. And if, if you go ahead and put an LED reader board here, the ground will be more than separated. You've heard of an objective study, finally, in all these debates, about what sells cars. You heard that highway signs are not that significant in selling cars. You heard from Mr. Ladden that what sells cars in his organization are his salespeople. You also heard that what sells cars are people going on the internet and trying to get the best deal. I'm against the LED reader board, but I think because there's been open discussion, we came up with another design by Mr. Bear, and I think that's something to consider. And it came about because of public input, and I want the gentlemen to know that this is not a nefarious conspiracy to try to disrupt business in the city. It's about community members who want the city to be better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tula Kalavos, and our last speaker is going to be Kevin Redner. Good evening.
Good evening, all. I'm saving time. I didn't plan to come tonight, but I saw the meeting, and I sort of got outraged, for one reason only, that whether the, the sign is needed or not, it's a non-fact. However, it's you that is going to decide on what the outcome of the city is, and there's nothing wrong with not changing. The parthenon did not change, it's still there, two and a half years, 1,000 years. The city has a certain ambiance, and we work very hard to keep it. I've been here 36 years, and I remember fighting for that little sign on Chuck E. Cheese, and we kept the little mouse nice and cute, instead of that huge mouse you had in Ventura, and we brought you pictures here. Now, it's up to you to decide. I'm against the reader, I like the sign, I like the fact that it got smaller, but no lights flashing around, this is not Las Vegas. When you get, would you like a city that after that, we would have sign after sign? Remember when we took out the, the sign at Howard Johnson's? How we fought about neon lights on Thousand Oaks Boulevard? What the heck are you thinking about doing something like that? The main idea is that you have to make the decision, it's a republic, it's not a democracy, we cannot pass our will. So it's up to you, and I count on you, because I worked very hard for this city to be what it is, and I don't want to see it changed. I was in my pajamas, and I got dressed to come here and talk to you.
Thank you for that. All right, our last speaker is Kevin Redner.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Kind of did this at the last second here this evening, but I wanted to come down, I knew we were talking about the, the auto mall sign tonight. First off, I want to say that I am opposed to any auto mall sign that would include an electronic reader board, or electronic billboard of any sort. I'm a 10-year resident of Newbury Park, and while I've enjoyed my time here immensely, it's a beautiful community, I have noticed over the years that the aesthetic has been declining somewhat. It seems like most open parcels tend to get houses built on them, and now we're seeing this renovation of the auto mall with the giant new auto dealers, and there's a lot more light over there now. When you drive down the freeway, it becomes a very garish sight. I'd hate to see that further blemished by the inclusion of another electronic reader board, the kinds that we see in other communities in Southern California. There are, you know, two kinds of communities that one sees when you travel around a little bit. There are those that, you know, give their all for, you know, commercial success and business promotion, and there are others that tend to be a little more quiet about the way they go about their business. And I've liked Thousand Oaks because of the way that, you know, we're kind of a small and kind of a green community, and we don't do the, the garish broadcasting of advertising and things of that nature. So, again, I don't think there's been a demonstrated need for the sign. As other people have said, most people do their shopping for cars via the internet or newspaper ads. And as far as a precedent goes for schools having these reader boards, those are not-for-profit businesses, so they do stand apart from something like the auto mall, and I don't think we should set a precedent by changing our general plan to accommodate a leaderboard at the auto mall now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes our public comment cards. Ms. Marata, do you want to come up and provide some response?
I did want to speak a little bit about Francisco Bear's proposal. It was never presented to the auto mall. And, you know, they're presenting it to the city, but the city's not paying for the sign. The auto malls, it's, it's an auto mall sign, it's our sign, not your sign, so they didn't give us the opportunity even to look at it. I saw it in the paper, just like everybody else did. So that's why it wasn't even brought up tonight, because it was never presented to us. We're concerned, though, with the, you know, the, the blight of so many logos, and you can't see them, you just can't, can't see them, it's not effective. Again, I, I appreciate this process, even though it's painful at times, I do appreciate it, and, again, we truly have tried to come up with a compromise that would still suit our needs, but also be a sign that is attractive. And we think it's attractive, but I guess that's... And we think it's attractive, but I guess that's subjective. Anyway, that's it.
All right, this is a study session. There's not going to be any decision. Ms. Morata might want to stay there, though. Questions or comments from the council at this point? Ms. Bildi Lepeña.
Mrs. Morata, thank you very much for enduring this, as has the entire city. This is now, I believe, meeting number six. You have, have had workshops. We've seen the comment cards. And it seems to me, although some may disagree and call it a vocal minority, but it seems to me that it is a significant majority who is opposed to an LED reader board. And after all of these meetings, and all of the input and the feedback, you still came back today, tonight, with two proposals, both include an LED reader board, six times as larger than the existing reader board on the, on the sign. And at the last council meeting, the direction we had given was, from one council member, was that it shouldn't be larger, or pretty close to the size of the current sign, I mean, a temperature and date sign. So I'm wondering why that was not followed.
Well, with all due respect, I know a lot of the speakers tonight were opposed, but at the last three meetings that I've been to, when they have counted up the cards in favor and opposed, it has been more in favor of the sign. Some people don't like to get up and speak, but the, I don't know what, what the result is tonight, maybe, you know, but that, that has been the case, that there's been more in favor than against.
Okay, I, I have seen the comment cards, and from those who are residents in the city of Thousand Oaks, they were opposed, and then those who are employees of the auto mall, or business associates, or in other towns--
I don't have that information.
Yeah, they were in favor of, of the auto mall sign. So I'm just wondering, I, as a council member, want to do the right thing and want to make the correct and the right decision. We have, we are guided by municipal codes. Whatever you're proposing would still require a municipal code amendment, and I'm just wondering why you didn't decide to come back with, with a smaller reader board that was about the same size as the current sign.
The direction I believe that we got was to make it similar in size to what's in front of the Civic Arts Plaza, and there was also some discussion about the fact that it had to be a certain size in order to be safely seen from the, from eight lanes of traffic. So that's why we had YESCO do that. And I think, as Francisco Baird stated, it's, it's getting to the point where it's almost too small to be effective, so this is probably the threshold that we're at as far as how small it can get. We feel it's, it's an important component of, of our new sign, obviously, or else we wouldn't be going through this.
Obviously, that's true. I'm also wondering about some information we received a couple of council meetings ago, namely, which was again repeated tonight, that there are 100, one speaker mentioned 200 dealerships in direct competition with the auto mall, only three of whom have a digital reader board, and the others do not. I would like your feedback on, on that.
I think Ms. Branham spoke to that earlier tonight. That report, which we looked over, all 13 pages, I believe it was, didn't say which dealers are successful. Are they selling more cars than us? Are we selling more cars than them? It really just said there's some dealers that have them and some dealers that don't. But are some of those dealers going broke because they don't have proper signage? We don't know. So, it was just a lot of information, but it really didn't give us a lot to compare what was the right thing to do. It just said some dealers have them, some dealers don't.
I would imagine that if those three dealerships, which do have a digital reader board and are hugely more successful than others who do not, that the other dealerships would have followed suit sooner than later. Now, tonight, we are presented with another study by a speaker, by KS and R, an independent market research firm, that says that the internet, 65% of buyers find their dealership on the internet. Is that information that you are aware of?
Yeah, we do a lot with the internet as individual dealers. We used to have a group site, but that kind of went by the wayside when the budget kind of dried up. It's, it's hard to get all 14 dealers to combine their funds for anything, but we're back doing that. We've found out from this process that, what were we thinking? You know, we do need to get that back up. So that is a very important aspect of our business, and we spend a huge amount of money on our websites. This sign is just a component, just a component. It's not going to make us or break us, but it is a component that is going to help us, we believe, help us sell more cars, and that's important. We do all the right things.
The internet, as I was pointing it out in the last presentation, I actually handled that portion of it, the internet is a fraction, or is probably 20 times the cost per lead that it would be for a sign like this, or impressions. That's part of it. So you're saying there's--
Can you speak into the microphone so I can hear you better?
You were saying that there's a study that says 60% of people use the internet. They use it for a lot of variety of things. Some of it is just to find the dealership after they've gone and seen it on, let's say, Thousand Oaks or Oxnard. You also made reference to there's only three signs, but those three signs represent 20 or 30 dealerships. It's not three dealerships that have three signs. It's dealerships who have multiple, or one sign for multiple dealerships. You were talking about three, right? With 200? It's not that. There's a lot more people that have representation by an auto mall sign. But for the internet, they could be as much as $20 a lead. For the impressions that we showed in the slideshow before, it's, it's pennies for each one of these impressions. It's, the cost of the sign over the life of the sign is minimal. It's one of the least expensive ways to advertise to people, period. That's why we're interested, and it also compensates or offsets some of the expense that we're going to put into this.
I, there was also some, thank you, there was also some mention made about other reader boards that are being used at schools. Those are, as was already mentioned, owned by the school district, and they have a public benefit, and they are not lined up, not facing a freeway either. So it would still be considered, at least, a council member would consider any sign with an LED reader board precedent setting. And any comparison to a school property reader board is, is, would not be a correct one to make, simply because they have different messages, different purposes, public benefit, and are publicly owned.
I think that my point to that was that if it's safe at a school, it's probably safe on the freeway. It was, that was my point, is not necessarily the message, but that it is obviously, if they're put at schools, there, where children are, then it's probably something that you can glance at, and it's still a safe tool to get the message out to the public.
The, I'm wondering the location of the sign. You say the location of the sign is not going to be the current location. Is that something that you had mentioned before, or did I misunderstand?
If I said that, I didn't mean that. I don't exactly know the exact placement, but it's going to be pretty much in the center of the auto mall like it is now.
Okay, and then, lastly, the, are you, can, I mean, we're here tonight to discuss this, and I'm just wondering, I will ask the obvious question, can, can you show us a proposal that has the exact same size of reader board as, as on the current sign?
Can, the, the little tiny one that's there now that just does time and temperature? No. No. We can't do that. It just, it's not effective, not for, not for what you want, what we need to show. I mean, not to, to show the dealerships and the website address, and, and really have it visible from both sides of the freeway. That one's way too small. I think you heard that tonight, even from people that, you know, may, maybe aren't for it, that, you know, we're pretty getting, pretty close to the threshold of how small it can be and still be effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Morata? Just remind council, this is a study session. We're not making any decisions here this evening. It's likely going to be the last study session. Our next opportunity here will be a public hearing. But I think, as Ms. Morata pointed out, these are draft proposals. They are not in concrete, and so I, it's my sense that the auto mall is open to comments and suggestions. Dr. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Morata, I, I think I appreciate the plight of the auto mall, and I certainly appreciate the plight of our business community. Considering that, and also considering what you've heard from this segment of our 130,000 people, I'd like it if you guys look at the drawing board and try to incorporate the stuff that you've heard balanced with good business sense. Okay? That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? No comments? All right. Ms. Morata, thank you very much for your time and your effort. We appreciate your patience, and those of, really, everybody that has participated in the process. The public hearing, is my understanding, Mr. Minogue, be scheduled for two weeks?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And that will be a full public hearing, and yet another opportunity for the community to come down and participate in our process. Ms. Irwin.
Are we, I mean, I do have comments after Ms.--
Well, I asked a couple of times.
No, but I'm talking about, I, when we're all done with--
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morata. Okay, she may want to actually comment on your comments.
Yeah, I mean, I have general comments on, okay, you can--
I can stand, I can sit.
I have a, I have a whole sheet full of comments. But I, I first, but I wanted to ask some staff questions first. I thought we were finishing up with Ms. Morata, and then I just had, I wanted to ask Mr. Prescott one question. I know we've addressed this before, but can you talk a little bit more about the precedent setting, having the digital sign at the auto mall? We don't want to see these digital signs up and down the freeway. So how do we prevent that? How, within our code?
Well, I think the city attorney has addressed that previously, and in the response to some questions that were presented to the city council at the February 22nd study session, and that is that you're making, this eve, not this evening, but at the public hearing, you would be making a legislative decision that related only to the auto mall, so there is no legal precedent, so to speak. That notwithstanding, I think the question then would become, what would happen if you were faced with another proposal for a similar type sign in a different location? And that would be basically a council judgment, whether that, what you did with the auto mall would be a precedent for that particular sign. Legally, it's not. One thing I, I've said in, in previous commentary is that, you know, the auto mall sign that you see now, and I'm mainly talking about the size of it, because the reader board that's on it now is, is fairly small. We have not had other requests for similar-sized signs along the freeway corridor or anywhere else in town. So, in the 17 or 18 years that that sign has been there, the reader boards that exist in the city, other than the Civic Arts Plaza reader board, which is in a, you know, a public setting, are all at the schools. And the school district, to some degree, operates under, under different rules whereby they do not come to the city for approval of the signage if it's at a, if it's at a campus at a school. So I don't think those in themselves set a precedent. So that's, that's probably as far as I can go with the discussion of precedent. It would really, in my view, be a determination by the city council of the specific facts, the specific situation, should someone else want to go through the same types of efforts that the Auto Mall Association has done in the future. But the approval of this reader board would not set a legal precedent.
All right. I, I don't know why anybody else would want to go through this personally, but, okay, so I, I actually do have a, a number of comments since this is a study session. First, I want to talk a little bit about the process. You know, we've had a lot of criticism of the process. There have been, there is no shortage of process here. And as a matter of fact, Star Editorial states that the city should be commended for its cautious approach in, in trying to get a solution to the auto mall sign. We all know all the different meetings that we've been to, and the process has been messy, and, you know, I think for many of us, unpleasant. I think there were people that were trying to derail the process, just to derail the process. I appreciate all the residents that came and, and tried to give input. I, I really do, positive and negative. We, we like to have civil discourse on this matter. I, you know, reminder, I was very uneasy with this sign, and I think that the new sign suggested by the auto mall is a true, true compromise. The auto mall listened to the criticism. They came up with a completely new sign. This is not the committee sign that had, was hacked one way and hacked another way. The sign is basically the same size as the original, and a full 11 feet shorter than the, the initial proposed design. So I really commend the auto mall for, for going through the process and listening to the residential input. I didn't support a reader board with advertising. I actually, right at this point, don't even support community messaging. I didn't support the size of the reader board. This redesign has a much smaller reader board, and I appreciate that. I could say that I don't want a reader board at all, but I have to acknowledge that the auto mall has a unique problem. The only dealerships that can be seen from the freeway are the ones that are right along the freeway, and they are the, as they like to say, the largest auto dealer in the, in the world. And I think that the dealers that are, let's say, along the boulevard deserve to be identified, and that's basically what this sign is going to do. It's going to allow dealers to be identified. Since this is a study session, I'd like to say that I would prefer that the colors are not too bright. I, I think that the auto mall understands that, and that they're much dimmer at night. I leave that to staff, you know, making sure that we meet community standards. And like I said before, I prefer only brands, and I, I don't want a fast refresh time, no flashy signs or anything that, like that. While I appreciate the other sign designs, I appreciate people coming forward and giving their input. I prefer the auto mall sign, but I really don't think that that's our job as government. Our job as government was to set parameters, and I think that, you know, especially the small government advocates that are here should understand that we should not be interfering more than we already have with the business of a private company. We have set parameters for them, and I think at this point, it is up from, to them to come up with a tasteful design that is in the best interest of the community. And I think personally, what you've come up with is, you know, just a huge difference from what you had, and, and I really don't think necessarily that it needs any more refining from my perspective. Thank you.
Dr. Clancy, did you have more comments, or are you good? Okay. Mr. Gillette, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask Mr. Prescott. I had raised the question, and the answer to part of it came back in the April 12th memorandum to the city manager, and that, that has to do with the size, comparable size of, of other signs in the community. The overall size of the existing sign at the auto mall, or even with its, with its estimated changes and modifications, how does that compare to two locations in the city? One was the Oaks sign at the intersection of Hillcrest and Lynn Road, if you take into account the planters and everything that go to constitute that sign. The other, constitute the size of that sign. The other one is the Jan's Malls sign at the intersection of Moore Park Road and Hillcrest, and again, in totality. How do they compare sizewise?
We did provide a memorandum regarding the Oaks Mall sign that you described, and the sign area itself is about 150 square feet, seven feet tall, and 21 feet in width. It's more of a horizontal than a vertical.
Does that include the planters, or is that's just the sign?
No, that is just the area where the copy is, and the copy consists simply of the words, the Oaks, and a relatively large design-type symbol. The, the structure upon which it's located, which frames it and reads together as an entity, is about 30 feet, nine inches-- is about 30 feet nine inches wide and about 16 feet nine inches in height from the ground to the top of the arch that it's on. So it's obviously shorter. The sign we're talking about here tonight is 18 feet eight inches to the top of the reader board and another 24 feet, not another, but a total of 24 feet to the top of the, the oak tree adornments. So that's perhaps six feet taller than that sign.
Okay.
Or eight feet, I'm sorry, from 16.9 to 24 feet, actually a little over seven feet. And then the width, again, looking at the sign structure, not just the area where the copy is, is, we're talking now about roughly 34 to 37 feet on the proposed auto mall sign, depending on whether you include the water feature, compared to 30 feet nine inches. So it's several feet wider.
Okay.
And we didn't, we didn't do a comparison to the Janes Mall signs, but those are, I think, significantly, at least a little bit smaller. They have kind of retaining walls that go out further, though.
That, that was the one, and the one at Moore Park and Hillcrest was the one I was looking at specifically, because when you add the planters and everything else to it, it starts to become pretty, I was just trying to get an idea, because there are other signs of size within the community, and those were a couple that stand out on very visible locations. Thank you very much, Mr. Prescott. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Any further comments? Ms. Bill Olapeno.
Since we will have another public hearing, it seems, on the 26th, I just wanted to mention again, I, I do want to make sure that I am not in agreement with staff's interpretation of the municipal code regarding the freestanding monument sign. Our old municipal code does state that if you decide to put www, and then whatever the website will be, that is, is advertising, obviously, and, and advertising is not allowed within 660 feet of the right-of-way of any freeway. That's our code. So it is precedent-setting, and it is precedent-setting in that regard, and I respectfully disagree with staff on that.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much for your time and your effort, and we'll see, I guess, the vast majority of you back here on the 26th. All right, very good. That concludes that item. We have been, we are going to move that item up, item 10B, however, we have been at this three and a half hours, so we are going to take a recess, and we are going to adjourn into closed session. The city attorney will announce closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. The city council will be going into closed session to discuss two worker compensation cases involving claimant Patrick Boxley and claimant Javier Lipez pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.95, subsection A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection B, five potential cases, and conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection C, two cases. Thank you.
We convene our council meeting, and we'll move to item 10B, which we requested to move up. That's the Thousand Oaks Term Limits Initiative, and that will be Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before we get started with this, I do want to thank and acknowledge Linda Lawrence and her staff for their tremendous amount of research and, and effort here to, to prepare the background information. The, in your agenda packet, the, the full report is here. Do you want to remind council that the, the reason for this impact analysis was, staff was directed to do this at the March 22nd council meeting, and at that time, staff had advised council, or there were, appeared to be a couple options for council, one to adopt the ordinance outright and establish term limits, or to go to the voters. And subsequent to that council meeting, the city attorney learned that the, the overriding government code section requires that this to go to the voters. Council still has the prerogative to do or ask for an impact analysis to be done, and that's what we've done, and that's in, in your report. We did set out to provide a fairly comprehensive analysis, so you can understand what, how term limits work in, in the country, and we do provide an overview, the national, state, and, and local level. And it is interesting reading in terms of the term limits that were attempted nationally and those that were repealed by the Supreme Court. A number of states have term limits for their state legislatures, but the majority, 35, do not. And in California, in 1990, the voters did put term limits in for the state senate and state assembly, as well as for the governor. And those terms and, and the restrictions are delineated here. And at the county level, out of the 58 counties, 15% or nine have term limits. And in California, and this was interesting, with 481 cities, the, the analysis found that 20% of the cities in California, or 98, have term limits, and they do vary from one term for the mayor to four terms for all the council members. The term limits are more common in larger cities, in cities that have charters, and cities with full-time, fully-paid council members. So charter cities of, it's about 43% of charter cities have term limits, and for general law cities like Thousand Oaks, it's 13% that, that have term limits. And again, those are primarily larger cities and those with full-time council members. So the initiative for, for, that's proposed for the, the city here would have three consecutive four-year terms, and it would go into effect in, with the 20, well, if it's voted on in November 2012, then it would kick in effectively in 2026, which would be 14 years after the November 2012 election, and that would apply to those who are up for election in, in 2014. And the details of, of what is proposed is in, in the report. Now, as far as the impact analysis, we looked at, well, let's take a look at the history in our community and how have the actual terms of council members worked, what have been the advantages with the incumbents, and how often are they reelected? So we've had 33 individuals serve as council members in the city's history, going back to 1964, and it's interesting that the average or the mean tenure for individuals who serve on the council is 6.95 years, just under two full terms. So the median, the point in the middle of the 33 council members has been five years, just more than one term. The most common term or, or length of service for elected officials in Thousand Oaks has been four years, one term. Those serving two terms, eight years or more, it's, are serving two terms or less, it's been 27, so 82%, and those serving over three terms has been about 12%. And if you, so, serving more than three terms is, is a rare occurrence in our city, in our history. There's been a few individuals where that has taken place. As far as the advantage of being incumbent, nine incumbents have actually lost reelection bids, and 13 have decided not to run. So you've had a tremendous amount of opportunity for challengers, and if you look at, we provided some data for you on page 121, looking back over the last 15 years, and the number of challengers has been substantial. In one case, up to 33 individuals expressed an interest to, to fill a seat. As far as spending on campaigns, incumbents do not necessarily have an advantage over challengers. The, the record for the most amount ever raised and spent on a council race did indeed come from a challenger back in November of, of 2000. And also challengers do have the, in our history, have run as slates, and they've been able to pool resources, so that's not been an issue in, with respect to our history. There's also a table on page seven or page 122 in the packet, which we show you the tenure of the 10 cities in the county, and you can see that 60% of the cities have council members who've served, are currently in their fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, or ninth term. So there's a, a number of cities where the tenure is actually longer than the current council here. So as far as, the next question is, how about empirical evidence, actual data and research? Has there been an analysis done at, say, at the university level or with some think tanks and so on, that actually take a look at this question? Do incumbents have an advantage? There's no data that we could find, and the clerk's office did extensive research. We talked to a variety of other cities and universities and so on. Their term limits are still relatively, relatively new in local government, and there's no data. And we even talked to some of the sources that were quoted during the synergy gathering process, and they revealed that, that there is no data. So you have arguments in favor and, and against, and they're really opinions based on feelings and opinions, but they're not validated by, by data. So some of the arguments in favor, and they're delineated here in the report, we try to be balanced, showing you samples of those in favor and those against. Some of the ones in favor is that having term limits will encourage new people to get involved in local government, broaden the base of potential candidates, limit potential abuses of power by elected officials who serve for long periods of time, encouraging fresh, new ideas, giving the voters more choices, and, and other comments like that. The arguments against suggest that you erode the effectiveness of council members in their final term, do they become a lame duck because they, the community knows that their time is up? The arguments also against include avoiding restricting the ability of, of future voters to be able to vote who their council member should or should not be. It's often felt that term limits are supposed to be applied toward full-time politicians, not part-time council members in smaller cities. And the list sort of goes on. There's also concern about enhancing the power of lobbyists and lawyers and consultants, staff, unions, special interest groups. We've seen that happen in Sacramento with their term limits. And there's also the fear of loss of representation at the national, state, and regional levels. If a city becomes the only city in its county to have term limits, do they then have less representation on regional boards and that type of thing? Doesn't, it, it could make obtaining grants and regulation assistance more difficult. So in conclusion, our, this community here does not have an excessive or long-term incumbents who become an issue in terms of the, the actual history in the community. So statistically, it's not an issue, and 90% of the council members serve three terms or less. There are many arguments theoretically in favor and against having term limits, but again, we were not able to find any data to support either set of arguments. So will there be an impact? Based on our history, no. But again, in terms of measuring an impact of an initiative like this, as it's written, it'll be so many years down the road before it could become effective, and that assumes that those council members in office in November 2014 or November, or excuse me, November 2014 or 2016 will remain in office through 2024, 2026. So it's hard to say if it'll, it'll be an impact. But one thing that we did observe, the city has a consistent track record of healthy and frequent council member turnover. That's likely to continue for many years to come, and if there is an initiative like this that becomes law, then the current generation of voters will be able to preclude a future generation from voters with respect to their ability to retain a council member that they feel is, is doing a good job, even though this historically has not been an issue. So that's really it by way of the, the staff report, and we're available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Questions for Mr. Mitnick. Dr. Clancy. We do have speaker cards. You want to hear those first? All right. We have some speaker cards. Al Adam, followed by Debbie Gregory, followed by John Fonti, and Nick Kidway. Good evening, Mr. Adam.
Good evening, council members. Al Adam, Thousand Oaks. I must say, on the impact analysis, I believe if the code had been interpreted correctly from the start, the impact analysis would never have been written. I think it's the intent of the election code for the impact analysis to be created to help council members decide whether or not to send the initiative to the ballot or adopt it into law immediately. The government code says, states that any term limits initiative has to go to the ballot, therefore making the impact analysis purely discretionary on your part. It said in the report, it cost over $10,000 for the impact analysis, and it was prepared by the highest paid staff member, the city manager. My group and I put a lot of our own money into this thing, thousands of dollars, hundreds of hours of volunteer time, and I ask you, if you had been told that this impact analysis, and you would be billed for this, would you have, have been so quick to spend taxpayer money? I'm not so sure you would have. The initiative is fair, you've, you've all agreed to that. It's fair, you can serve 12 years, you sit out a term, then you can run again. It's not a lifetime ban, and it's not retroactive, it doesn't affect any member on this, on this council, and that's the way I wanted it. And believe me, I got, I collected 12,000 signatures, and that's not 10% of the registered voters, that's close to 20. And the most common complaint I heard is it should be one term, or it should be two terms, or it should be retroactive, or it should be a lifetime ban. I resisted all that and made it as absolutely fair as possible. To address some of the issues in the impact analysis, this business of part-time versus full-time, I guess you guys are billed as part-time people. However, you're full-time decision-makers. You're the full-time decision-makers for the city of Thousand Oaks, I believe. And, and I will say too, it's what you make of it. Councilmember Gillette, when you were mayor last year, you did a wonderful job. You went to over 200 events, and I think you were a full-time mayor, and, and you should be proud of that. But I, I don't see that as being part-time. This business of being a lame duck, there's been many representatives that have been absolutely liberated in their last term. They don't have to run for election. They don't have to raise money. They don't have to cater to special interests. They can vote their conscience and, and feel good about it and then go home. So I, I don't necessarily buy this lame duck argument. As far as influence, you stated that the average term is five to six years. We've had no problems with influence or representation with that. I'm giving you 12. Why would we have a problem with 12 if we have no problem with five or six as far as influence and representation? And finally, and this is the most important point, there was a study in there that listed 33 council members from 1964 to the present, served a total of 229 years, and you did an average, and that came out to whatever it was, five, six, seven years term. Okay, fine. But you left something out. If you look at that thing a little closer, there were four council members, council member Fiori, Horner, Gillette, and Fox, I'm sorry, I'll finish up very quickly here, that served 80, that will serve when your terms are done, 82 of those years. 82 of those 229 years will be served by four council members. Now, that's exactly what term limits is supposed to prevent, the constant, the monopoly of power concentrated in the hands of, of a few. And you left that out of the survey, so I don't think the survey told the whole story. But anyway, it's going to go to the ballot presumptively, because that's what the law says, and the people will decide in November of 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Gregory, followed by John Fonti, followed by Nick Kidway.
Term limits, the people of this community want them, or they wouldn't have signed to put it on the ballot, and your responsibility was to put it on the ballot. This was a legal responsibility. We have a very highly-paid city attorney, but she erred. Now we've squandered $10,000, maybe more, in taxpayer dollars for a report to provide political rhetoric to vote against it. It doesn't matter what the past is, we have two council members sitting here that are on the fourth and fifth terms. People here believe that you've already made decisions. The hearing we had, the study session, is very clear how the vote's going to go on the auto mall. They don't want this kind of power. The only impact of term limits is going to be to your financial contributors, such as the auto mall, such as special interests. You're not serving the residents, you don't show respect for the residents, and the residents don't respect you. I am for term limits and I am for other initiatives. I want the people of this community to use their power. If you don't like the people sitting on the dais and the decisions they make, if they put LED boards and make this the auto, largest auto mall in the world, and put us on the map for it instead of what is really wonderful about this community, let's put an initiative together and get rid of them. Maybe we can afford four more years of them going to Washington DC to party and giving themselves lifetime insurance benefits for their part-time job, for their entire family. Yes, we need term limits. I thank you, Al Adam. Put it on the ballot as you're legally obligated to do. Stop with the rhetoric and playing with the numbers, and stop squandering our taxpayer dollars, and you're going to see a taxpayer suit. It's malfeasance. Thank you.
John Fonti, followed by Nick Kidway. John Fonti, followed by Nick Kidway.
John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. First off, thank you, Al Adam, for bringing up this term limits initiative. Too bad it doesn't take effect until 2026. Let's see. I'd like to quote our $300,000 city attorney, who maybe could pay attention, who made a big mistake at the last council meeting when she applied the wrong law to the term limits initiative, Ms. Albano. Quote, she says, "If you can't get the little stuff right, how will you get the big stuff right? I couldn't agree more. After her screw-up, isn't all her advice questionable? Shouldn't it all be reviewed by outside attorneys? While expensive, it's necessary." I found that proper government code in a simple Google search. Came up on the first page. "We can't afford needless lawsuits and legal expenses. The alternative is for her to resign, because if you can't trust her on the little stuff, then how are you going to trust her on the big stuff?" Regarding the term limits report as prepared by your other $300,000 direct report, city manager Scott Mitnick. "I've never seen such a waste of time and resources, over $10,000 of staff time." Let me repeat some of the more poignant points by Mr. Mitnick because they are dear. "Term limits are supposed to be applied toward full-time politicians who serve in larger jurisdictions and not toward part-time councils who serve in smaller cities." Says who, Mr. Mitnick? Then why did the cities of Fullerton and Laguna Beach recently adopt similar term limits for their part-time city councils? Just did it just a few months ago. Here's another brilliant one. "Elected officials should be voted out of office if the public doesn't believe they're effective in their current position." Duh. That's an argument against term limits? Ineffective elected officials should be voted out of office regardless of term limits. Another Mitnick pearl of wisdom, TO term limits will result in Thousand Oaks being the only city in Ventura County to have them, which will weaken the city's competitiveness. Hmm. Gee, I didn't know the cities of Ventura are in some sort of horse race. Mr. Mitnick's truism is unsupported baloneyism. Yet another one. Well, maybe I don't have time. Let me move forward here. We have enough of these. Let's see. "Term limits make council members more politically partisan and adversarial." Hmm. I don't know how you can get any more adversarial or partisan than the council majority is now. As the majority always says to our minority council member, Claudia Bildelapena, and the public, "It's our way or the highway." Last Mitnick-ism, "Term limits increase the cost of local campaigns. How going to cost the local campaigns be any bigger when the long-term incumbents are the biggest recipients of contributions and the biggest spenders?"
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Mubarak. How are you? Nick Kidway, resident of Nibery Park. Don't laugh. I was locked out, literally, again, not for the first time, but for the third time, and then I was lucky that the guard came. And then the guard had an argument with me that this is a closed meeting. I mean, the guard is outside, you can verify it. I mean, we don't have an elected American government. We are living in a third-world country. Whenever it's, I mean, don't smile so much, council member. I mean, two minutes on important issues and dragging it on again and again. I mean, I don't like term limits, but for God's sake, this, we need term limits. I mean, when I got involved in this racket, it was a $12,000-a-year job. Now, and you had to go to meetings till 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. And if the meetings were every week, I mean, like you have a packed agenda, you should meet every other week. I mean, no. I want to be with my wife. I want to watch Glenn Beck. Yeah. Yeah. Armchair quarterbacking. I mean, people at home get upset, this guy is speaking again and again. I mean, get involved. I mean, we have lost, I mean, I could not, I mean, all the three, four doors were locked. I was going to go up, and then even the elevator won't work because of security. I mean, 9/11, I mean, the terrorists are coming, you know? Name like Kidway. I mean, better watch out for him, right? Well, why is this not retroactive? I mean, all of you folks, I mean, you've heard the people, I did not sign it, but I would now, but you've, you know that the majority of the people want the term limits. So why not make it so that people who have 12 years in it do not run again? I mean, Claudia Bildelapena would probably be in the same thing. I mean, four years off, I mean, that's what I like about it. You can come back, become an activist again, be accountable to this stupid clock rather than go rambling on and on. I mean, don't know the answers and get hijacked by car dealers. There are 260 roughly dealerships in this neighborhood that, in this market that compete with the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall. There are about 12 in Oxnard, there are about 12 or 14 in Ventura, not three. Yes, so that still leaves good 200 that don't have LED boards. I mean, that's the answer, but you have to be in the real world. That's the problem. We don't have people in the real world. They are insulated. Even our orthodontist, who has a private practice, he doesn't know what the heck is going on in the real world, and then they try to become pro-business by just leaning over backwards to help them. I mean, things like, you need a full-time mayor. You need a direct mayor at least, like our neighboring countries of cities of Simi and Moore Park. You need districts. We have five police beats. Why not we have five districts so that I would have to send flyers to only 15,000 people, not 70,000 voters? We reduce the cost of our business and be more effective. And the sign ordinance is completely illegal. I mean, you need to change it. It doesn't cost anything. I mean, if Claudia Bildelapena was such a wonderful person, she would put it in the next council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kidway. That's all the public comments we have. Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff recommendation, one is to receive the report. And speaking of the report, there have been accusations made that it's, I don't think I heard the word boondoggle, but I'm sure it was under the breath back there. What it is, it's an informative document that tells people what term limits involve and what the incidence of it has been in our country. We have absolutely no option of whether we put it on the ballot. It goes to the voters, period. Absolutely, period. The only rhetoric I've heard tonight has been on that side of the dais. We're just here to put the thing on the, to the voters and comment on the staff report. The staff report was worth it. It was a very thorough report, and I appreciate what Mr. Mitnick has done. So I would move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Glancy moves the staff recommendation. It's item one and two. Comments to the motion. Ms. Bildelapena.
I would like to add an amendment actually to, or ask you, the maker of the motion, whether you can separate recommendation one from two, please.
Sure. Be glad to.
Thank you.
All right, so you're moving item one?
I'm moving item one.
All right. Mr. Glancy moves item one. Comments on that motion? Vote, please.
Motion carries for one. Councilmember Bildelapena dissenting.
All right. Dr. Glancy.
Thank you. I move item two.
He moves item 10B2. Discussion on that item. Ms. Bildelapena.
Yes, but thank you for splitting the two recommendations. I wanted to be in keeping with my previous vote, which was to put it on the ballot right away and not go through the cost of having a term limits impact analysis. So I'm not going to speak to the objectivity of the term limits initiative, but certainly will be supporting recommendation number two. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? All right, hearing none. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. We'll go to item 10, back to item 10A now, I believe, or 9B, I'm sorry.
Sorry about the delay. We're just trying to get the PowerPoint up. Good evening, Mayor Fox.
Hey, John, hold on a second. Mr. Gillette.
Mr. Mayor, consistent with council policy, given the 10:30, and I know we're moving right along, but so that we're not interrupted, I'd consensus of the council to go past 11 o'clock to conclude tonight's agenda.
All right. If there's no objection, that'll be the order, although, Mr. Adams, we're counting on you.
I only have 35 slides. I can turn into three minutes, so I'll do my best.
Okay, very good.
All right. Good evening, city council tonight. This is the first process of the CIP budget, and this is a study session. City council should have received a draft CIP budget. The budget has been provided to the Capitol Facilities Committee, which was done March 28th. Tonight, staff is available for any comments. We will bring this back to council as part of the recommendation in June. So I have a few slides. I'm going to quickly go through them. I think I'll make a few points as we go through. Just briefly, program overview, budget overview, the future challenges and sources of funds, and then staff recommendations. And then at the end, council can ask questions related to the draft CIP budget. Just want to reemphasize this, the city manages about $1 billion worth of infrastructure assets, capital assets. The capital plan or capital budget is based on several various documents, 15-year facilities committee or facilities maintenance program. We have other plans, wastewater, financial plans, water plans, street pavement plans, and also the financial strategic plan. Policies and priorities as far as projects are done by council goal-setting and reserves fund capital programs. Quickly, same thing. Council goal sets the direction of our capital budget. We evaluate the needs of the city. We prioritize the projects, and then we provide to council as part of a study session and then part of the public hearing process and then adoption of CIP. The document, which is, was included in the, in the agenda, really has three sections. One's a summary, detail by category, and then project by fund. We show budget to date, new appropriations, and funding sources. This just simply shows how the CIP budget has changed over the last five cycles. In 2003, '05, we had over $50 million in allocations with approximately 140 projects. We had increases in '07, '09, significant increase in '09, '11, and then the most recent budget, less projects, less funding than prior cycles, and I think that's important to note. I'm just going to quickly go through the council top priorities. Annually, the council identifies their top 10 priorities. There are several projects in here that are identified and appropriated funding for those projects to accomplish your priorities. Next, this is a table to show how funding is allocated. The largest category is our streets at 20.9 million the first year and 20, or 21.4 in the two-year budget. As you can see in the current budget that's in front of you as far as CIP, the new appropriations are $70 million. The last cycle was over $100 million, and that has been a decrease of 33%. As revenues and sources of funds have sort of been used for various projects, we've had a decline in those sources. Here's just sort of the breakout, streets at 27%. Certainly, your enterprise funds that are at the bottom support a lot of the capital projects. This is the second year of the CIP budget, $22 million. Just highlight as far as infrastructure projects, a lot of maintenance projects, pavement overlay, concrete replacement, slurry seal citywide, some substantial improvement or enhancements, Earps Road, Route 101 at Wendy, Lynn Road bike lanes, and stormwater quality improvements. Again, just another list of projects, both for facilities and other improvements. Water projects and wastewater are listed. I think the largest one is the reservoir and pump station for Wilder at 4.5 million. We have a lot of wastewater projects. This lists the top four projects in the capital budget. Funding sources, various funding sources. One of the, our top fund is the general fund, but as you will see, the general fund is supporting very little capital projects as we go forward. We also have gas tax, developer impact fees, enterprise funds, redevelopment, and theaters. Here's the breakout. As you can tell, general fund is only supporting 6% of the CIP for next year. Certainly, the largest funding source between developer is water and wastewater. Those plans are in draft form. Water and wastewater can certainly change between now and June as we finalize the financial plans. The second year, I told you it was 22 million. Here's the breakout. The largest component is wastewater at $8.8 million. Just quick summaries, general fund, only 3.7 in the current budget cycle, a decrease from last year. General fund, because we've had less revenues and less growth in fund balance, we have less projects to be funding from the general fund. Here's just to show you how general fund has supported capital projects since 2008. Significant decrease going from 2008 all the way through fiscal year 2013, which is the second year of the two-year budget. Theaters fund, there is an increase of 600 over prior budget cycle, mainly because capital projects have been deferred in the theaters fund. It's only 600,000, mostly facility maintenance type of items. Gas tax, several large projects funded from state gas tax, 2.1 million increase from prior budget cycle. Lying and landscaping, a decrease. Redevelopment agency, an increase based on an acquisition of a property. Just enterprise funds, water, wastewater, transportation, brief summaries of those funds. Developer funds, $8 million, or 8.7 million, 4.4 million dollar increase. Tonight's staff recommendation is to receive the information of the studies, or of the new capital budget, place proposed budget on the May 9th Planning Commission meeting, and then schedule a public hearing for June 14th. And staff is available for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Adams? Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Adams, or Sprecher, I'm not sure which. I know the parking structure improvements included at one time, repainting the parking structure, that was approved, as I recall, and it was given a priority one. The three projects that we have listed for the facilities projects are, all three of them, priority two. And I was wondering if you could shed some light on that for me?
Originally, the parking upgrades, I believe that were budgeted in. 2007, 2009 cycle had approximately 2 million, and I don't have the budget in front of me, but it had the painting of the facility and some other improvements at the parking garage, enhanced enhancements on the turnaround. That went to, as we had declines in our revenues in '08, '09, that project went back to the Capitol Facilities Committee, which made a recommendation to reduce that project to only priority one projects or components. And so the major change in '09, '10, '11 was a reduction of 1.6 million down to 400,000 that was mainly for security. And so now, that project is mostly a carryover with some minor improvements to, to the facility. And so a slight change. Hopefully answered that question.
You know, you did mostly, but with the way you called out the repainting, does the painting of the structure now assume a priority two, or is it still part of a one
You know, the painting, the, I'm looking at page 127, which only has 383,000 allocated, which is a priority one, and that does not include the painting. The painting of the structure has been eliminated from that project. The painting in itself would be a priority three, in my opinion. What's a priority one is simply the security enhancements.
Thanks a lot for the answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Adams? Ms. Gillette, and then Ms. Bildelapena.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, just real quickly, your slide 26 on page 13. 2010, project funding sources, the $5 million we were able to obtain for the design work for the 23101 interchange, that wouldn't be reflected here, then, is that correct?
What, I'm sorry, what slide are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on slide 26, project funding sources.
No.
That's just general fund.
That's just general fund, that money was actually federal funding, or, or of funding, and so...
I know, and I know how hard we worked at it, and how hard in Washington we had to work, because you can't do that at the local level, you simply can't do it.
And yes...
And if you're going to get that money, you got to go where the money is and get the people, staffers talking to each other, so, okay, I'm fine, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Ms. Bill O'Penny, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering about a couple of the holding accounts.
Yes.
I know one is a very sensitive issue, Lang Ranch Park, and it looks like the park district may be moving forward with this. My other question is Discovery Center, how long are we going to be holding this money for the Discovery Center?
You know, I mean, I think the, I don't exactly, with the redevelopment agency, it is redevelopment funds, at this point, there is no identified other project, I think it's okay to have it in the holding account unless council identifies other projects that can be funded through the redevelopment agency. We do have prior arrangements with the Discovery Center to try to help them fund the project, so it's really, it's really at council's direction on how long it's held. Right now, in the budget, staff's recommendation is, since it's in a holding account, is to leave it in the capital budget as a carryforward.
Indefinitely, it's $5 million indefinitely.
I'll let the city manager answer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we have had this issue before you, we are still working with the Discovery Center, and we're waiting to see how some of the state funding situations play out, but we anticipate, in fact, we're trying to get a meeting with the Discovery Center right now, so we would probably come back to council the next few months with an update on that project. So that money is just sitting in that holding account for the time being.
Okay, thank you, I'm wondering, because it's been four years, so, and with Lang Ranch, I think it's three years, and I wonder if, how long we can hold the money. I had a couple of questions already forwarded to staff earlier in the day. We need to include the development funds for the sound wall in this CIP.
Hopefully...
It's not in there.
You are correct, and thank you for that observation. In the counts, in the green packet, we had a memo that identified why that has occurred, and how much money is available. That money was not included in the actual budget last year as far as the document, but those funds have been carried forward every year since 2005. 1.2 million was identified in 2005, in which not one, well, nothing has been spent since 2005, so that money has been carrying over for the last six years.
Okay, just so that we're all clear as to what is in the capital improvement program, we do need to include that in there.
And we will...
Most definitely, we shouldn't just leave it hanging.
In the, in the next, in the final document that's presented to the city council, June 14th, it will be included in there.
Okay, thank you, and then also for the timber school, we had $1 million set aside from the redevelopment agency regarding the historic timber school, and now I'm hearing that that money has been folded into some other amount?
Yes, on page, let me try, give me a second, just identify. On page 142, as you are aware, the city has, and I believe the school board has taken action to negotiate the sale of the Kelly Road facility, their maintenance that includes timber school, I think it's 10 acres. That, that purchase, which is currently budgeted for 4.2, and that's just a number that was available at the last minute, is in there, and that million dollars was originally appropriated or allocated for the timber school based on compensation to the school district for the historic designation. So that money, with us purchasing the property, that money's being used for the purchase, so that's how it's rolled into that project at 142.
Okay, and then the Rancho Petronero specific plan, $450,000, also in a sort of holding pattern, any idea when that will come to fruition, the improvements with the park district?
Don't see the community development director, but I know that they're running, they've already started, they have spent some of the money in the design aspect, if you remember correctly, this is sort of our component to equal the 50/50 with CRPD, since they are the ones who spent the money to acquire the land, so that is our contribution. So I believe they're going through the design aspect.
Okay, and just, I want to go back briefly to the noise mitigation for Dos Vientos.
Correct.
I believe that because Dos Vientos is not considered fully built out, none of these fees can be paid out yet for the final noise mitigation. Perhaps if we could get an update from staff for the next presentation on the different phases that were included in the noise mitigation, as long as, along with the, with the sound wall, because I got yet another email the other day from someone inquiring about the sound wall that was promised between Paseo Santa Monica and Reno Road on the south side of Lynn Road, and I think that was in phase number three, but it's been so long, I just need a little refresher, and perhaps it would be helpful to have, for the whole council to have a little refresh on that.
Because there's multiple departments, including Public Works and City Attorney and City Manager's Office involved, let us come up with a response in a memo for the council, because it's going to be six weeks before we get back on this budget, then we can provide the update, and then if there's additional questions, we can address that at that point.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Any further questions? We have one speaker card, John Fonny.
John Fonny, Thousand Oaks. I was looking at the proposed capital improvement program budget, and I noticed on page 40, with regards to the Route 101 at Wendy Drive interchange improvements, something caught my eye there. I do live in Newberry Park, and I've always been concerned about the, that intersection, and how that project is going to affect the traffic patterns there, especially for the time period of which the project will be completed prior to the completion of the 101 intersection widening. I see on this, on page 40, we're talking here, construction's going to happen in a year from now, in spring of '12, but the road widening isn't going to happen until 2014. I believe I have heard, and even been represented by staff, that that would be 2013, now it's going out to 2014, so if I could ask, maybe one of you council members can ask staff to provide a response to that, thank you.
Thank you, there's no more speaker cards. It's a pleasure, the council. Do we have questions for staff, more?
Well, if they could answer the question by the speaker.
Mr. Gillette?
Could we ask for a response back to that, that particular issue? Is it, if not, we can just bring it back, but so we...
I think normally we have staff getting back to this.
A great deal of concern, especially with the construction that's going to go on there and what have you, and that...
And I'll turn that over to the city engineer.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and council, the, this project is fully funded, and design will be, will be completed later this year, it'll go to Caltrans for their final review and processing before it goes out to bid, and as pointed out in early 2013, the project will move forward for, you know, probably a little bit less than a year construction, so that would put us in 2013. I'm not sure of the question about 2014, although end date, it says spring 2014 here, I think, I think that's, will be done before that, with the entire project.
All right, could I assist, and Jay, when do we get this back?
I'm sorry, June 14th is...
June 14th, you may make a point that I, at June 14th, have the detail on that for us, all right.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion? Mr. Gillette?
I move staff recommendation, recommendations, one, two, and three.
Right, and that scheduled public hearing will be for June 14th, 2011. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
That is approved, now moved item 10A, that's the Santa Rosa Valley Park Proposed Amendment, or Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Watkins?
By the way, while staff is changing out, I failed to put into the record the statement cards on the auto mall, city clerk has those, I believe it was 23 cards in favor, and 17 cards opposed, and just for the record, I did review the city residents, there was a handful of cards that were both for and opposed, that were from outside Thousand Oaks. All right.
Ready?
You're up.
Mayor Fox, members of the council, the next item up before you is the Memorandum of Agreement in regards to the Santa Rosa Valley Park. I'll skip through some of the history, I think this has been the council often enough also, that you know most of the background, but the bottom line is, we, we both own a property adjacent to the park, and we share Hill Canyon Road with the Santa Rosa Park. And at one point, it had considered a memorandum of agreement with the county, the city council chose to table that, looking for some more information. Late last year, the county advised us, they had put some additional funding available for the project, there were some letters written, and we came back to council with a status update in December, and the city council directed us to meet with county staff and see if we couldn't craft an MOA that worked. I think by the end of that week, we had had our first meeting with the county staff, and we went back and forth with them a bit after that. Basically, keeping with the same spirit, the terms of the previous draft MOA from 2007, what we did is, is come to the same agreement and update some of the various items. So just very quickly, it does include the widening of Hill Canyon Road, so Hill Canyon Road would be widened to a two-lane road, 20 foot wide, the city would pay for one-half of the cost of that road widening. And then, the other thing that the city would agree to share the costs on is the acceleration and deceleration lanes that were constructed on Santa Rosa Road. So those have already been constructed, those were constructed as part of phase one, and since we had no MOA, we hadn't participated in those at the time. The construction cost for the county for that was a little over 400,000, 405,000 dollars. So our share of those two, of the acceleration, deceleration lanes, would be 205,000. And then, the county would construct a paved turnaround at the end of the road, similar as we talked with last time, and then we would swap easements, the county would get an easement for us, oh, sorry, from us, for the equestrian trail, the county would give us an easement for Hill Canyon Road, it's extreme southerly, and there's actually a gap in our easement there also. Should be noted that as part of the road widening, we will not widen the bridge, that remains the, kind of the lone stumbling block, as far as a very expensive piece of that, but we did include the same provision as that we'd had in the MOA before, but basically saying that if problems do arise, then the city and the county would work together to widen the bridge. The county still feels very strongly that there's not going to be any issues, the city just wanted to make sure that if there was, we would work together to do that. But there is no funding commitment at this time for the widening of the bridge, hopefully everything out there will work just fine, but if for some reason it doesn't, then the county is agreeing to work with us, try to find a way to widen the bridge. And then, there's one other item I just wanted to mention in regards, that's in your green packet, there was one line item that was in our previous drafts, was in the 2007, was inadvertently left out of the one that was in the council report tonight, but that was just the county and the city agreeing to maintain, or share maintenance of the road on, also on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis. And so with that, it's very similar to what was before the county before, the financial contribution by the city is 405,000 dollars, and it's a reasonable amount, we do get benefit from this, which is why we can justify sharing that, we would get a better roadway, the roadway would be widened and paved, and we get the acceleration, deceleration lanes on Santa Rosa Road, which all benefit our access to the wastewater plant, and so that represents a reasonable cost to the city for the benefit that we obtain. And I want to mention Paul Grossgold from the County of Ventura's here, Mr. Grossgold was here last time we talked about the MOA, and he's willing to answer any questions from the county's perspective also, and I'm certainly willing to answer any questions from the city's end.
All right, questions for staff, Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, actually, I have a question for Mr. Grossgold, good evening. Thanks for being with us this evening and staying so late. I have a question about item 4.3A on page 113 of the staff report, and what it says real quickly is, the county agrees to maintain the park in a manner that ensures the park continues to be a community asset at the level of quality residents expect. Is that a reasonable expectation of something that the county can fulfill and actually do?
Other equestrian parks, one is Soul Park up in Ojai, and we have another equestrian arena at Tappo Canyon Park. So we, we do operate equestrian facilities, we operate quite a number of parks, we are an enterprise fund, our Parks Department is an enterprise fund that collects ops and operations and maintenance funds from use fees throughout the park, throughout the park, entire park enterprise, so that, that money is pooled and used to maintain all the parks.
Thanks very much for the explanation, appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, how about a motion? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, for those of us that go back and are familiar with the 40-year history of this park, it's had an interesting ride, it's its original gift, a donation to the Surf Rider Foundation, blah, 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 on it goes. I have spent a considerable amount of time on this issue, and I have really looked for a way to support this project. There's no question about the setting out there, my primary concerns are, and I want to specifically get those into the record, I had hoped that if this ever did move forward, and the county was willing and ready to move forward, that something could have been done where the city would have been approached. The city owns 200 acres right across the road, and even a discussion on some form of a land swap, where a, an equestrian facility, a park for the residents of Santa Rosa Valley could have been developed far away from the, from the stream bed. The discharge stream out of Hill Canyon, of course, that is our mechanism for recovering our, our recycled water, and instead of going the cost of pumping it back up and reutilizing it here, we sell it to downstream agribusiness, to Camrosa, and that system works, and works very well. But that never happened, and the decision was to move ahead with it. I cannot, and I will continue to say this, and I think it's so critical that it's included in the record, conceive or imagine that a park of this environmental significance would have ever moved forward without a full environmental analysis, full environmental analysis. Now, I have nothing but the utmost respect for the environmental planners of the county, professionals in every sense, they said a mitigated negative declaration is sufficient, sustained heavy usage by, by equestrians and with equestrian... and with equestrians come other livestock and what have you, it was never a matter of removing solid waste, it's the liquid waste that goes into the water and ultimately can percolate towards the, towards the stream bed and into the water table. But, that being, that being the case, the decisions have been made, the, the long-term maintenance of the park is going to be an issue. No sufficient ongoing funding and commitment for proper upkeep can be guaranteed, I recognize that, I recognize the inventory of once-held county parks here in the Cano Valley are now under the jurisdiction of the Cano Recreation and Park District, for whatever reason, and probably that works very well. But I'm hopeful that if in the course of events, to ensure the type of maintenance, the type of ongoing care, all of the things necessary to maintain a facility like that, that something can be worked out between the county, the residents of Santa Rosa Valley, and the Cano Recreation and Park District, which ensures that all of those things are safeguarded, but also that that park facility does not become a liability on the Cano Recreation and Park District, and through that, a liability on the residents of the city of Thousand Oaks, which comprise the largest, the largest population base within that district. That being said, I believe that the Santa Rosa Valley residents, given what they pay, what their assessed valuation is, and what they pay in property taxes, that they deserve a park out there, and it's a perfect setting for it. I think it'll be a great asset to their community in the surrounding area. City staffs work closely with their counterparts at the county, and we've reached a compromise that I can support. Now, one thing I would ask Public Works, recognizing diminished dollars and what have you, but also the relationship that we as a municipality and the county has with the military assets in this county, that bridge is, is an opportunity waiting to happen, and perhaps through negotiation or working with the CBs, since we can get everything but the bridge, and it's fixed, and it's accessible, and what have you, that get us into a queue with, with the CBs, that perhaps that's one way to get it done, because it is a choke point out there, and we all recognize and know that we have to do everything we possibly can to maintain full ingress and egress access to that Hill Canyon Treatment I wanted to commend Rosemary Allison and Mark Burley and others in the Santa Rosa Valley for carrying the torch for all these years and negotiating in such an open, objective manner. Met with them just recently and told them about my concerns, and told them it was my intention to put this into the record, so it would become part of the record. So tonight, I ask the county, community supporters, and future park users, take note of my concerns and work hard to protect that land and the water on that site. With that, with those comments in mind, I'll move the staff recommendation, points one and two.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gillette, he moves items one and two for item 10A. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Irwin.
I am going to support the motion, make a quick comment. I ran into Mark Burley and Rosemary Allison, they both wanted to be here this evening, and they both asked if to, asked me to thank the council in advance for what they hoped would be our support.
All right, any other comments? Ms. Bill LaPena?
The bridge may still be a sticking point, but I think there is a lot of symbolism to this bridge. This may finally be the bridge that will ease the tensions between the county and the city, and I will wholeheartedly endorse this endeavor and the motion, and I am absolutely thrilled that after all this time, this is finally coming to fruition, so thank you to my colleagues.
All right, if there's no further comment, vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
And for the record, we have one written statement card in favor of item 10A. All right, we'll move to item 12, that's committee, commission, and board reports. Item 12A is the council health insurance benefit. That's the finance committee of Councilmember Irwin and Clancy. Who's going to handle this?
I am going to take the report for Councilmember Clancy and myself, on behalf of Councilmember Clancy and myself. In November, at Mayor Gillette, then Mayor Gillette's request, the council audit and committee, audit and finance committee looked at post-retiree benefits. I am sure that the council that approved the resolution, and I was not a part of that council, had no idea how expensive medical coverage would get, I can only assume that PERS Medical at that point was a cheaper way to go. Dr. Clancy and I had three meetings that were completely open to the public, staff did extensive research and met with the taxpayers' union a number of times, and the issue is complicated. The issue is complex partially because post-retiree medical benefits are tied to current council medical coverage. There was a suggestion made by a council member to drop the post-retiree medical benefit immediately for council members, and it turns out that would have been simply illegal. Because the city carries our employee medical coverage through PERS, we are bound by PERS and Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act rules and regulations. Every municipality that has medical coverage under PERS must provide post-retiree benefit at the same level for at least the portion not covered by a cafeteria plan. The absolute minimum funding requirement is $108 a month. Although this issue was brought up during the election as something unique to Thousand Oaks, it is obviously an issue that many municipalities that have PERS medical coverage are grappling with. We looked at items such as changing the vesting period or changing the age at which an employee becomes eligible, but as the report states, we have to abide by PERS regulations, and PERS has very narrow restrictions. It is PERS that is dictating that a council member is eligible if he or she has served five years, is at least 50 years of age, takes CalPERS retirement within 120 days of leaving the city, and doesn't take another position in an agency that offers CalPERS benefits. We also looked at a suggestion of making council members contractors, as suggested by members of the public. This is not feasible, as council members are considered officers of the city. At least three, and arguably all five council members are vested. Case law has clearly shown that pension benefits offered at the time of employment cannot be changed without a corresponding comparable benefit, and there is no legal consensus on whether health benefits can be changed. Therefore, the city attorney has advised that changing sitting city council members' benefits may not be legal and places the city legally at risk. In addition, as a, as a committee member, I do not think it is appropriate, fair, or ethical to force other council members to give up their legal vested rights. I do not know all of the medical circumstances of other council members, and I do not know whether or not they have given up other health insurance coverage because they knew they had a vested right to city medical coverage. In the Acorn, the article written by Michelle Knight quotes Bill Madison, CalPERS spokesperson, and saying that cities contracted with PERS can stop paying lifetime health insurance for new city council members, but could legally be liable if they change benefits already promised to current council members. Most of you have already read the committee recommendations, they have been released to the public, they are basically, leave the benefits in place for retirees currently receiving them. Current council members keep their benefits, but change the way the payment is made to PERS to make it a combination of a regular payment and a cafeteria plan, and new council members go to the absolute minimum PERS requirement payment of $108 per month, basically with no more health insurance coverage during their tenure or after their tenure. I do strongly suggest that each council member looks at their current coverage and personal situation, consider waiving their healthcare benefit, or look at going to a lower plan level. This is not a policy issue, this is a policy issue, and it is not a financial issue. Many cities are dealing with a huge, huge underfunded post-retiree medical benefits, liability for their employees. This city takes its obligations seriously. Very early on, limits were placed on coverage, and we have prefunded a very significant portion of our liability with CalPERS, and as a matter of fact, we were one of the first cities in California to do so. This item has been dealt with in a completely transparent and deliberate way. As I stated before, every meeting was open to the public. In addition, the newspapers have printed articles outlining the parameters we were operating under. Finally, both Dr. Clancy and I want to thank Dick Thompson and the taxpayers' union for working with our staff. In the Star article written by Teresa Rochester, Dick Thompson is quoted as saying he appreciated how the city has handled the matter by saying the officials were responsive to the group's concerns. I quote from the article, "They have gotten to a place where I think it is a reasonable endpoint for the council. Because of the system rules they have to abide to, have to abide by, they cannot fully extract themselves, but we think they have gotten to a good place, and we are satisfied." That is the end of my report, and I'll take questions, or staff can take questions.
Questions for Ms. Irwin, from the council. Ms. Bill LaPena?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering who, you mentioned that the city would be held liable, potentially held liable, held liable by whom, if we were to adopt different recommendations?
The city could be held liable by any council member that later turns around and says that their vested benefit was taken away from them.
Okay, so a sitting or retired council member would actually sue the city over that?
Maybe the city attorney can further...
Yes, that could happen, yes. Okay, I just needed to hear that officially, that a sitting or retired council member would sue the city of, or could sue the city. I did state that this should not be made retroactive at all, because we do have three recipients of the healthcare, lifetime healthcare benefit, and to take that away from the current three who are benefiting from this would be, it would be grossly unfair, yes, and I never, ever suggested that we do that. I want this to be on the record. And I wonder though, however, how we can deny coverage, medical or current medical and lifetime, for future council members, starting with the 2012 election, I would assume, or later, how we could deny them and not include ourselves in this move?
Well, if you look at the ways that cities are dealing with even pension issues, they're, they are making rules for new employees going forward, it is absolutely legal to do that, and we are talking about funding at the PERS minimum requirement of $108 per month.
And that would be the monthly benefit for health insurance, or just for when, when one is retired?
That would be the monthly benefit for current health insurance, and PERS requires that that amount is paid post-retirement also.
After five years, and it can't be done later than that?
It has to be after five years, if you retire after age 50, if you do not go into another PERS system.
So you couldn't, say you're 50 years old, and you've been with the city for, what I'm trying to understand is, you couldn't extend the length of service of the city before one becomes eligible? Yeah, I, I'm glad for the presentation and the research you did, because it shows to me it is proof that we, especially the state, is in desperate need of pension reform, desperate need of pension reform. I think that is a huge problem with this state, and I hope that the governor will actually move in that direction, that is really my fervent hope. Any, any financial recovery in the state cannot happen without pension reform. So I did ask for a, for a table of different scenarios regarding the premium cost and monthly cafeteria healthcare benefits for council members, and I'm looking at this, and for a family, the healthcare benefit, or I should say, the medical insurance would drop from $2,047 to $1,939, is that correct? Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, in looking at page 78 of the green packet, what we're suggesting is, is that the current premium cost, and that's the first line of PERS Care, is currently $2,047. If we implement, as the finance audit committee is recommending, of that $2,047, $108 would be the PEMCA, which is the minimum, and then the council would adopt a resolution that would have a cafeteria plan of $1,936, $39 to make up the difference. So for the current council and the retiree councils, we will hold the councils whole. The issue there is, is that the $108 is what any future council members would receive. So, again, does not change what the current or retirees get, but will change future to 108. And so that's the savings of $23,000 that you would have for future council members.
And what exactly does PEMCA stand for, P-E-M-H-C-A?
This is, Mayor Protem Irwin did a great job of identifying what PEMCA stands for, and let me see if I can find the report.
I can say it again, it's the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act.
Okay, that is what it refers to, okay. And then for, say, a single person, that benefit would still remain the same, but you would have to introduce, for a single person, $787, and you, this, this resolution would then cover the gap between 108 and 187?
Seven eighty, yes, you are correct, that when we adopt the resolution, the cafeteria plan will cover that gap for current and retirees, in order to keep those people receiving the current benefit.
And it all depends on the different healthcare plans, whether it's PERS Care, Kaiser, Blue Shield, or Blue Shield Access?
It depends on the plan and the council person's status, whether they're covering a family or just themselves, or themselves and a spouse.
And just so that I'm absolutely clear, we cannot reduce the healthcare benefits at all for fear that a council member would sue the city?
I, I said that that's not the only reason, I said it would be difficult for individual committee members to compel council members, not knowing their medical needs and what type of insurance they've given up, to compel them to give up a vested right. So there were two issues, the potential legal liability, which was confirmed by both the city attorney and the PERS spokesperson, and the fact that it's really unethical for me as a council person to compel you to give up your vested rights, not knowing what your medical problems might be, or not knowing what type of insurance you might have foregone, given that you thought you had the vested right to medical insurance. And again, as I stated, I think that every, every council person should look at their own personal situation and look at lowering their benefit or waiving their benefit altogether. During the next open enrollment period, everybody can look at what the different plans are that's, that are offered, that are less expensive with than what they currently, if they feel so inclined.
Yeah, that option has always been available. That's, that's nothing new. Thank you.
Any further questions? Dr. Clancy, do you want to add to the...
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment I want to make. First off, I want to thank Councilwoman Irwin for her leadership during our seemingly many, many meetings, but, but through our meetings. The goal was to arrive at a rational and legal conclusion to the information, to our goal, to our, our charge, based on a lot of information provided by staff, a lot of work that they did for us, and I believe that's what, what we're doing, is making a rational and legal recommendation. The bottom line of all of this, I think, is that this is a really complex issue. There were a couple of ideas floating around at first, that we could do this... There were a couple of ideas floating around at first, that we could do this, this, and this, and we found out that this group says you can't do that, another group says it's illegal to do that, and so every time something was, was considered, we got slapped down by it. And it was a, it was quite an exercise, but again, I want to thank Councilwoman Irwin for her leadership. Thank you.
All right, we do have some speaker cards. Debbie Gregory. Not here. John Fonti, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, once again. John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. I've got a problem with all of these self-serving conclusions. I'm sorry, I just still don't get it. If you all voted against lifetime benefits, once you're off the council, no more benefits, then how could the city be held liable? Take a straw vote first. You're all unanimous, then you vote formally for it, and there's no issue. Let me start off. I'd like to, again, quote our overpaid city attorney, who made a big mistake at the last council meeting when she applied the wrong law to the term limits initiative. If you can't get the little stuff right, how will you get the big stuff right? I would think that all her advice is now questionable and needs to be reviewed by outside attorneys before being given to council. Regarding this matter, our city attorney provided no outside legal opinion whatsoever. It just wasn't in the staff report. I didn't see one. All she says is to trust her, that there is no definitive legal answer or consensus on whether council can take away their own lifetime health benefits, or make up, or make them pony up the true costs. That's hogwash. Ms. Albano, who serves at the pleasure of the council, should have recused herself from this matter and given it to independent outside attorneys. There is no alternative. She cannot write an unbiased, independent analysis. If her bosses, you, don't like what she, her recommendation is, she could easily lose her job. This is just common sense in the real world, but then again, we're in Thousand Oaks, which is rapidly becoming our own little bell. I've heard a lot of confusion tonight. I don't know, I hear it's, on the one hand, it's illegal to drop it, PERS is dictating it, and then I hear there's confusion, and then I hear the recommendation, with no support of independent legal opinion, we have to keep it. Doesn't make sense to me. So enjoy your lifetime benefit, because you're probably going to vote yourself in that tonight.
Nick Kidway.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Mubarak. How are you? Nick Kidway, resident of New York Park. By the way, I mean, Mubarak had a heart attack, so I wonder if the government is going to pay it or not. I mean, he's probably covered by lifetime benefits, he should be. You got me all riled up. It's not really good to get upset, but I, I mean, like the last speaker said, if you can't get the little things right, how can we expect the big things? And that's one of the reasons I get so riled up, is that, I mean, if you lock the city hall during a Tuesday night meeting, I mean, the mayor Protem is bragging about the open meetings, but I brought the issue 100 times, that your calendar on your website is, I mean, you're trying to be too many good things to all people. I mean, it has a chamber calendar, it has a cultural calendar, stuff like that. All you need to have is a city, city official calendar, and then if somebody wants to go to the chamber, provide the link, that's good enough. This is a political football, no question about it. I mean, it's disgusting. No one ran expecting these lifetime benefits. I mean, I mean, without being political or taking sides against the city attorney, something like that, something like this, and you do it all the time, you need outside counsel advice. You, it's, it's completely, I mean, I mean, it's unbelievable that people in the city, they're, I mean, Glenn Beck comes at 11 o'clock. He's on right now. No wonder, no, no one is here. I mean, that's more important than being involved in, in local government. I must say, however, that the retired council members and the surviving, survivors of the retired council members, I would not touch that. That would be, I mean, there, it's, there's just only a few of those, and this thing is more symbolic, and that's a wrong symbol to send to surviving spouses. And I would like clarification. I never get answers, but I was told by a sitting council member that you are self-insured. So people like, say, the distinguished Ed Masri, when he spent the time in, in, in the hospital, that cost the city about a million dollars. It opened up my ears because he served for a dollar a year. I would like, this is the right time to answer that. I also would like, I mean, for you to do the right thing. I mean, these so-called open meetings and all that, and kicking this political football. We would like a report on the cost that the city has in detail of the health costs of the city employees, the city managerial employees, and more importantly, the people who are retired, and like Mary Jane Lays and Phil Gatch, who are getting $200,000 a year in retired benefits, how much are they getting, going to be, how much are we going to be paying and are paying for the health benefits? I mean, those costs should be in a spreadsheet, not in a, you know, 200 page. That's what happened in 98. I was at the council meeting when these things were presented, and they were just slid through because they were on a binder for 350 pages. I would like the answers, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That's all the cards we have in this item. Ms. Irwin? Would you like to make a motion, since it appears this is coming from your committee report?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion. And I move Staff Recommendations 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Dr. Glancy moves items 1, 2, and 3. Discussion on the motion? It would just, you know, a lot of work was, was done into this, a difficult item. It was almost preordained that the committee would be criticized by some folks in the community, but the facts are what the facts are, whether folks like them or not is, is really another matter. And so I know there's a tremendous amount of time and effort. Also want to acknowledge your openness and transparency with this process, in inviting members of the public in to participate and view all your work in the light of day, as well as the press. And so there can be no question that this was done in, in an open manner, and, you know, the results are what the results are. So, all right. If there's no further discussion, vote, please.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Bill De La Penya dissenting.
All right, that is approved.
I was in Ontario last week for a couple of days for policy committee meetings. The first one was Housing Community Economic Development, and it was the, the California Cities. This meeting was a little bit different in that it was preceded by about an hour and a half presentation by the executive director, Chris McKenzie. And he spoke at great length about the efforts that have been taken to protect us, protect communities against the take on redevelopment agencies. And so, as I say, he spent a great deal of time discussing that. Then they went into the budget overview, and that took a lot of time also. The, the governor managed to lop off about $11.2 billion of a $26 billion projected shortfall with cuts, counting on new taxes and continuing taxes, extended taxes, to pick up the remainder of the balance. And as time passed, voter sentiment in support of those tax extensions really was waning, really going downhill, so he pulled it. He stopped conversations with the Republicans, he dropped the issue, and so right now at risk, things that are not funded very well, certainly, it's a little bit of a guesswork, fire suppression, the COPS program booking fees, corrections, health services to counties, public library funds, state park closures, and the gas tax swap is, is really still up in the air. That meeting ended, and then HCED met independently and began its business. We talked about, there was Prop 26 update, went over legislation. Two proposals that are of interest, AB 1220 from Alejo, which is an extenuation of the decision Urban Habitat Program versus City of Pleasanton, which, in essence, among other things, would give an interested group five years to challenge a housing element, which is soundly opposed to by the committee and the league. The other was AB 441, which is Monting, and it's a transportation commission issue. Talked about the continuing of the CDBG funds, and that really lasted altogether probably five or six hours. The second, the next day was Transportation, Communication, and Public Works. And again, it was preceded by an hour, hour and a half presentation by Chris McKenzie, different group, same presentation. Got to hear same old boring material twice, and I got to tell you, it's nauseating hearing these people talk about the budget and the, the structural problems with these legislators trying to actually do something. And, and then for proposed legislation, what they do is try to generate more structure to make it even more difficult in the coming years. But anyway, TCPW, we spent a lot of time really talking about mobile home issues, and we do have an ad hoc committee. We'll be working on trying to get either legislation carried or some cooperation from HCED to get mobile homes considered to be affordable housing rather than not, which is, would be a great boon to all communities that have housing requirements. All in all, it was a great meeting, went through the same legislative update, and I recommend that we see and file these reports.
All right, Dr. Glancy moves that we receive and file items 13A, 1, and 2. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 14, Mr. Mitnick, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, because of the lateness of the hour, I won't get into the state budget update beyond just saying that the state has a ways to go to resolve its deficit situation. It's gotten through about a third of its deficit, but there's more to come, and so we keep monitoring what's going on in Sacramento. We share updates with the city council. We're taking, keeping a close eye on our redevelopment funding, gas tax funds, and a variety of other sources of revenue from the state, or protecting our local revenues so the state doesn't get it. By way of announcements, upcoming items, we did hear earlier about some of the really neat things happening. We got a lot of stuff coming up, Arbor Earth Day, Chili Cookoff, Canoe Valley Days, National Library Week, a lot of exciting things going on at the library for, for, for kids and students. Information's on our website. Also, though, this weekend is the annual Scandinavian Festival at CLU on April 16th and 17th, so information is on the website for that. I'd like to also remind the council and the public, the upcoming Amgen Tour of California will conclude here in Thousand Oaks on May 22nd. Some information is on the city's website. In addition, the Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is going through a major paving project right now, from Erbs Road all the way to Westlake Boulevard, so we encourage the public to be aware of that, and there is information, more details on the city's website. Next city council meeting will be on April 26th. At this point, we're looking at three public hearings. Two are budget-related, one is the annual Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Review. This is federal money, and we still get some, and we're going through that process. There will be a hearing on the user fees for the next two years, a fee schedule, if you will. And then we heard earlier, the Auto Mall sign replacement project will come before council by way of a hearing on the 26th. And one other item, a committee report, this is an appeal of the Thunderburg Oaks Mobile Home Park rent request. So more information, more information and details are available on the city's website. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. Just to remind, and I should have, the city manager and the council, that Friday afternoon at 2:00 at Los Robles Hospital is the dedication ceremony of the statue, the full-size statue to Don Pruner, who is truly the, the parent of emergency medical service delivery in this community, and built, he and his wife Jackie built Pruner Healthcare Services up to the organization that it was. Don passed away about a year ago, and there'll be a statue dedication right outside the entrance to the new emergency room at 2:00, and a reception immediately following.
We'll get that on the website, too.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right. Item 15 was a closed session. Ms. Albano, do you want to report out?
Thank you. I just need to put on the record that there is nothing for us to report out from the closed session. Thank you.
All right, very good. That leads us to our adjournment tonight. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of Jess Snyder. Mr. Snyder is the father of Public Works Construction Inspector Jim Snyder. Jess passed away on March 20th. He was 84 years old and a retired contractor. Jess was a hard-working family man, marrying in 1949 to his wife Jenny. The Snyder's started their family here in Oxnard in Ventura County. In 1953, the Snyder family purchased a lot on Irving Drive in the Greenwich Village tract here in Thousand Oaks. They built a home for their growing family and moved to the Canoe Valley in 1955. Jess enjoyed the Canoe Valley, a small, quiet town. His fondest memories included quiet afternoons with his children, enjoying picnics at Lake Sherwood. That's before it was the Lake Sherwood that we know today, and in the evening hours, hearing the faint sounds of a lion's roar from Jungleland. Many of Jess's children still reside here in the Canoe Valley. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, we send our deepest condolences on the loss of their dad, Jeff Snyder. And with that, we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting for April 26, 2011. Have a great week.